And eight, we all stand for allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Moore, would you handle the TV coverage and then we'll be ready for the roll call?
The Montecito Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County of Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Loemoke, San Inez Valley, Santa Maria, and Orchid areas. Rebroadcasts of Montecito Planning Commission hearings are on Friday at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV Channel 20. And for the roll, Commissioner Gottsanker?
Here.
Commissioner Overall?
Here.
Commissioner Burrows?
Here.
Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Commissioner Riig? Here. Thank you very much. Moving on, agenda status report. Mr. Ward, you're handling that for us today. Ms. Black is not with us, on vacation, I hope.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The agenda looking ahead to July, well, everything for today's agenda is on track for the items we have. On the July 16th date, we will be bringing the Miramar Hotel project to your commission. I do want to let you know that we have, in the administrative record of that project, there's quite a few documents and public comment. Many of those things would be binders thick to be able to send to each of you in advance, and we will have those background reports and information available to you in advance of the hearing here at our offices, and you can set up appointments if you want to come in and review those. Those will also be available here the day of the hearing on July 16th as well. You will get your typical staff report packet on the environmental document and plans and those such things, but there are quite a few binders from the, we have about 100 public comment letters and all the technical reports that went as part of the project. So that will be part of our notice as well going out to the public, so the public will be available to come in and review those as well.
What, when do you think we will receive, or when will it be available for us to review?
Well, we're still in our production. Our hope is that we will have it more than a week before the hearing, so.
David, do you have a calendar? Give you a. But at this point, you can't guarantee more than the weeks.
That's correct. I mean, we're working quite expeditiously to get that done. So your typical date of receipt would be for the July 9th. We're on track right now to try to complete this by July 3rd and 4th for our final reviews.
It'd be great if we could get it before.
We know there's a great interest.
Because there's such a large volume of material, it would really be helpful. But I know you've got a lot to deal with, so we're aware of that, but just anything you could do would be great. Commissioner Gottsanker?
Yeah, I'm, you know, I know that, at least for myself, I've seen some of the public comment letters that staff has provided me with. My more, my concern is the technical data that needs to, that we need to see. Now, is that not, I mean, the whole packet I get might not be available, but as far as these thick binders with the technical support data for both the ND and the environmental report, is that available in part so that we could come in and start reading that? Because I know it's very, I mean, I've seen some of it, and it's very complex, you know, in some issues.
As part of our publication of the final environmental document, we'll include part of those appendices that includes the technical reports. That's one of the.
Oh, okay, okay.
Responses we're doing on behalf of the document coming from the public is to clarify some of that technical information, so it will be larger than what was released previously with those technical documents. So you'll have that, but there's cabinets full of information, and part of that's all part of the public record, and we have that cataloged and available, but it's already about eight binders thick, so it's not.
Right, so what I'm asking, Mr. Ward, is given you've got some of that now, I mean, you're saying, okay, it's eight binders thick, so you've got some of that, like now, you know, is it possible for the commissioners to start coming in and seeing some of that technical data now before it's packaged into the staff report?
Well, part of what staff is doing is taking the technical information, any new information that we've received from the applicant and their response to comments as well, because they reviewed all the document, all the public comment letters that have come in, and putting it into the environmental document, the response, showing how we've responded to those technical questions. All of the rest of the records are available.
Okay, great, okay, that's what I'm asking. So they're available now, so any of the commissioners that were interested in looking at some of that support information could start doing that now?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you. So you can release that information piecemeal, therefore, we could, for example, have copies of the 100 public comments that have come in and begin to read those?
Yes.
Could I please request that be delivered to me?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Mr. Ward, why don't you continue?
So on the July 16th, that's the only item that we have on the agenda that day. Looking out to August 20th, at this point, we only have a zoning enforcement briefing scheduled.
Okay. This might be the time to talk about the Miramar again. We have our meeting of July 16th. Given the volume of material and comment letters and the number of phone calls I've gotten, I have a feeling we're going to have quite a day, and I think, as much as I'm going to do my best to get through everything on that day, I think we should be cognizant of the fact that we may not be able to finish and maybe consider at this point what alternative day we might meet. I did talk to Assistant Director Black about it, and she suggested the last week of the month, because it is a fifth week, there was some availability of dates. I unfortunately didn't bring my personal calendar with me, but I believe we have a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday in July, and I wonder how my fellow commissioners, what their schedules look like and what the staff's situation would be for that period of time if we do need to continue the matter.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, that would be July 28, 29, 30, and then the 31st is on a Thursday. So I think those are the dates that you're referring to. That would be the fifth week in July.
What's staff's situation relative to those dates and the availability if we did need to continue this item?
Mr. Chair, staff would be available that week to have an additional hearing. I was just checking with David Viallos to see if there was anything for Santa Barbara Ranch, because they've had quite a few hearings, but they don't have anything scheduled for that week. So we could certainly work to coordinate an extra date.
Are there any alternatives in the week before that? I know immediately following this 16th hearing, I'm going to be gone on vacation for a week. But after that, my schedule, my personal schedule is open.
So, Mr. Chair, you're asking about the week of the 21st?
Well, just because I think continuity would be great. I prefer to have the hearing as close as possible rather than delay it.
Mr. Chair, we do have hearings that week on Monday for the Santa Barbara Ranch project, and then the regular county PC on the 23rd, yeah, Santa Barbara Ranch as well. It may make more sense to focus for that last week in July.
As a backup. It's looking as a backup, that's the most likely time period then. And it sounds like everybody, not you, what's your schedule?
Well, it depends on what date we're talking about. Towards the end of the month, I have scheduled some time away.
Do you know if any of those dates, are you gone? Well, it sounds like we're open that whole week.
Chairman, it would be July 28th, which is a Monday, Tuesday the 29th, or Wednesday the 30th.
Yeah, I don't have my calendar either, but I don't think I am selling it.
We may need you.
I feel we're all in trouble.
Well, do you know what you're, is it all?
I can give it to you, though. I just don't have it with me.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we're not going to resolve this today, but I think it's something that we do need to be cognizant of before we get to this next meeting and see if we can't put our schedules together with staff and come up with an alternative date.
Is there ever, ever an opportunity to go in evenings, do hearings in the evening?
Well, I have a feeling that on the 16th, we may have a hearing in the evening if you want one.
Or if you don't.
I would, because I can tell you.
When the staff have conflicts, we could go, you know, after dinner, maybe, I don't know, or during the day.
Well, I don't know, I hate to second guess it. My intention is to try to get through the staff presentation, the applicant's material, and the public testimony. I'm just not sure if there's going to be time left over after that for us to actually deliberate, so what I'm really looking for is the, is kind of the meat of the thing. I mean, I could be wrong, but I'm just, I'm looking at the volume and suggesting that one day is not going to cut it. I think, excuse me, Sue, but Commissioner Overall, I think you were next.
I just would have the observation that I think, given the importance of the project and the volume of material we're going to have to go through, that if we were to take a break after the public comment before we did deliberation, it might give us all an opportunity to reflect on what we've heard, do additional research if it's warranted before we enter the deliberations. I think to take a project of this magnitude and importance to the community and try and rush a decision on it would be a mistake.
I understand. Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you. I agree that it would be good to have some time. This is a priority for me, so any of those days would work. I do think it's important, on the second day of meeting, that it be done at a date and time when it can be televised, because I think a lot of people in Montecito are interested in this, want to see it, and I would like to make sure that that, that we do that if possible.
All right. With that, I think we, it's probably time to move on to the, what have we got here? Director's report is next. Director Baker?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, actually, the only item that I have today for you, hold me back up, just, I'm going to talk, go back to your prior subject of Miramar. If we're going to try and schedule it, how do we do that? If you don't have another meeting until the 16th, I think you're going to want to know before the 16th when you're going to set it.
Well, I agree.
So, I mean, almost as a group, if you're going to do it, we should try and do something before you leave today, I guess, is what I would suggest.
Well, it sounds like our one constraint is.
And maybe during a break or something, check, go and check on calendars or something like that, because I think you'd want to decide.
I think that's a good idea. We'll try to do that.
The community would want to know also what that day is going to be.
I think that's a good idea. Before we adjourn today, we'll see if we can't resolve that.
And then I will, or David and I will, between us, we'll do the checking as far as Channel 20 to make sure that we're lined up to be able to do, to have that out there also.
Your comments are well said, thank you.
Only other item, if you watched the board hearings last week, we had a budget decided on the part of the Board of Supervisors. The item that was on there for planning and development on Wednesday, if you caught this, we did not have any of our fees increased. And so I was asked to provide what I would do if we did not have fee increases. And one of the subjects that I placed out there was that we would have to probably be cutting back on bar time and commission time in order to cover ourselves. I mean, because we're revenue-driven, it's a big problem. There are some discussions going on with labor groups right now, which, if you've followed that at the board meeting, that there's going to be some furlough time in December. And the reason they're doing that is to cut back on the costs, and I, and what we're hopeful of is that with the furlough time and other aspects of those labor agreements is that we will not have to cut back on those either commission meetings or bar meetings. It was a big concern to me in terms of, frankly, more importantly, I think, on the bar meetings than the commission meetings, because there's, the backup on the bars can be just tremendous if we don't have those meetings going on a regular basis. So we're hopeful that we're able to avert that with the labor agreements that are being negotiated, one that's been completed and others that are being negotiated. So hopefully, we will be status quo in terms of what we're doing, but I'll be able to better tell you that at your next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Otherwise, answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners? Nothing at this point, but thank you. Now's the time for public comment, and it's the time when anyone that wishes to address us on an item that's not on our standard agenda can do so. I do have one speaker slip. Oh, this is for the Grissini, thank you. Mr. Palladini, I see you'd like to address us.
Good morning. Just to follow up on your comment about the Miramar review, I think what you'll find, and I think we've all sensed this, is there's going to be quite a bit of public comment. So people I've talked to, I think you should expect that this room will be way overflowing into the hallway, and I think it would be important to set aside an appropriate amount of time to let the community express itself. There's a lot of interest, as Commissioner Burrows mentioned, on this subject, and I think it would be wise to anticipate that there will be substantial amount of public comment, and I think it's, like I said, it's important to allocate enough time for that. The other thing, just real quick, is on behalf of the Board of the Montecito Association, I want to, I didn't have a chance to do this last month because I wasn't here, but I know you, you know that the Board of Supervisors voted 5-0 to approve the RMZ Land Use Development Code change amendment, and you heard about this last month, but I wanted to personally, on behalf of the Board, also thank you for your leadership and your foresight on this issue. They unanimously voted 5-0 to support your 5-0 vote, and I think this will be a very important change for the community and the protection of our hillside. So thanks very much for your hard work on that, and also to staff who did a terrific job on that as well. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Palladini. His comment is a good one. I'm making the assumption that on the 16th, we're going to go until all the public comment is finished, but that's without having consulted with you, staff, about your availability into the evening if we did need to do that. And I'm not really sure what the, your position is relative to the sort of overtime that would be required and whether staff is in fact available to do so. I find that there's really a continuity, and it's nice if you can have all the public testimony on one day, because you sort of get it all out. Everybody, the multi-day format, I have, I've personally found not to work particularly well, but I thought I'd ask for your comments relative to that subject.
Mr. Chairman, we'll be prepared to stay.
Good.
I think we kind of agree that if we, the more that we can get behind us of that continuity is.
Well, just warning and also to the community, that day is going to be, as far as I'm concerned, is the day for public testimony, and we will, we will meet and consider until everybody's had their say. So thank you.
Mr. Chair, we'll, as we prepare our notice, like I indicated, we'd be describing what documents are available as well. We'll provide part of that in the notice, too, about the length of, anticipated length of duration of the hearing and the public comment period as part of that.
Okay, very good. The next item on our agenda is the Planning Commissioners informational reports. I know this is kind of a light time of year, so I'll just say, does anybody have anything that they wish to tell us about, any of the commissioners? Not seeing anything, we'll move on to the Planning and Development Divisional briefings, and back to staff, I'm not sure which you have for us today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We actually have two items for you. One relates to the County Public Works encroachment permit policy, something that they recently developed in March of this year, but it was an effort that occurred over the last year or so, working with the Montecito Community Public Works and part of our departmental staff. I have copies of the policy, I believe it may have already been provided to you in the past, but if not, we'll pass it out again. Again, the lead on this effort was the Public Works Department in trying to address really safety issues along roadways, to ensure recovery zones, if there are pedestrians and bicyclists in the area, and ensuring that there was adequate distance from edge of pavement on public roads to where you might have your first edge of landscaping, fencing, or gates. So they worked on developing this policy, they had many workshops, as I understand, and the policy applies countywide, so it isn't just to Montecito, it's a countywide policy. Again, it only applies to public roadways. They established, depending on the roadway speed, whether it's a 25 mile per hour roadway posted speed, or over 25 miles per hour, there'd be a different distinction on minimum setback. If it's up to 25 miles per hour, it's a seven-foot minimum setback, and if it's over 25 miles per hour, it's 10-foot minimum. They also covered, you can see on the sheet here, landscaping and irrigation that might occur in that area, and they also provided a definition of what an obstacle is, to be real clear to everyone, for homeowners as well as applicants for new development. And it sets the stage for coordination between our department staff at the counter and permit processing staff to be looking at this carefully as we move projects through the process and submit them through to Public Works, who actually issues the encroachment permits themselves. Often, it's a condition on a project to go to Public Works, and they go through their process of getting that encroachment permit, but it may not have been fully thought of to make sure we have these minimum distances set during the planning stages and when the design is actually occurring. So this will be helpful to have part of that coordination occur up front, and we're doing training of our staff and the counterstaff as well. So if you have any questions, I can answer that, if you'd like.
Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Chair, thank you. This looks, it appears as if this is triggered, this policy is triggered when a homeowner requests an encroachment permit. Can we implement these policies in the course of other land use issues, the land use permit generally? Can we take a look at this, whether there is an encroachment, whether the setbacks have been complied with?
I believe so. Mr. Ward, would you?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Phillips, that's correct. And really, in having this documented as of March and providing the train to staff is to try to integrate that earlier on into the design process. We've also informed the bars as well, to try to catch some of those details up front rather than have it occur after the fact, after things have already been set in stage for design, and then having to come back and make a modification or a permit revision.
So, an issue that has nothing to do with an encroachment issue could come under our purview, and we can apply these policies? Someone wants a new fence in the backyard. We can take a look at the totality of the property?
Well, these, again, it's tied to the public roadway, and the planning department doesn't issue the encroachment permits. That falls within the purview of the Roads Commissioner and the Public Works Department. But what we want to ensure, if someone does propose fencing or walls or landscaping, that we're cognizant of edge of pavement and an easement area, to ensure that they wouldn't get caught up at the time that they go through and get their encroachment permit and get a gotcha, late-hit item, and see if we can catch that earlier on, and we could have advisement through the bar process or through your review of something, but really the authority for the encroachment permit is the Public Works and the Roads Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you on that item.
So the second briefing that we had today for you is on the Montecito Water District's recent urgency ordinance tied to landscaping, and staff has been coordinating recently with the general manager, Tom Mosby. He's here today to give you a brief overview of the ordinance, and then I will talk a little bit about our coordination efforts and how it's going since they adopted the ordinance in April.
Good, thank you.
Commissioners, good morning. Thank you for having the Water District here today. We are here to talk about ordinance 89, and we're here to talk about our water supply demand condition in Montecito. A very brief presentation, we have a total of eight PowerPoint slides for you, and we'll start with the first one. What we're showing you is a typical water supply condition in Montecito for a standard year. You're looking at the bottom, you typically have close to 7,000 acre feet of water. As you can see in this, you have your local supplies, which are Jameson, Dalton, and groundwater, 2,700 acre feet, and you have, of course, Kachuma, 2,651, which is our standard annual, and our imported state water, which normally is somewhere around 1,600, which is equivalent to about a 55, 60% entitlement. Next slide. So we have that water supply, and then all we're going to, all of a sudden, look at water demand in Montecito. Water demand in Montecito, for some unknown reason, which is obviously related to the outdoor landscaping, as we've shown, proven, is a function of our customers using a lot more water than we ever anticipated. Right now, our current demand levels, as you can see by that graph, are at the year 2020. We never anticipated this type of usage, yet the number of meters that we've actually sold in the district in the last two years has been perhaps 12. So we're a little bit surprised at the incline of the water demand situation in Montecito. Right now, we're looking at 7161, that was in 0607. For 0708, we're now looking at 7,400 acre feet of water needed to meet our customer water demand levels. We don't have that water right now. So, next slide, please. So if we start out, look at the 0708 trend, we see that come the month of September, we are actually, actually, it's sooner than that, coming the month of September or August, we're actually going to go negative. This is the first time in the district that we've seen us enter the new water year, which begins October 1, with a deficit. Normally, we have somewhere between 700 and 1,000 acre foot of what they call carryover water, which we store in Kachuma. This is the first year we don't have carryover. One of the reasons for that is a function of, again, customer demand has way outstripped our supply, and this has happened in the last two years. For the 0304, 0405, 0506 years, we were looking at somewhere around, somewhere averaging about 5,600 acre foot of demand. We're right now going to be at 6,400 acre foot of demand. I can't tell you what's happened other than the fact that a lot of this is going outdoors. I can't tell you what's happened other than the fact that a lot of this is going outdoors. This type of deficit has led us to do an emergency ordinance, which is Ordinance 89. You can go ahead, David. And Ordinance 89 resulted from several things. In understanding the water supply situation as it is, as you can see, we don't quite have the supply, a couple of things happened. We saw all of a sudden an increase in use that occurred on Coast Village Road. I think one of the projects there was, it kind of came to us late, we pointed out to the applicant that that's a big increase in your water use, and I think that's still to be heard by you, maybe you've heard it already. It's the Coast Village Road, that gas station out there. Their water use was substantially higher than what was shown in their environmental document. We talked to them and we recognized that, okay, it's higher, this is what it is, they corrected it, but we didn't have an ordinance in place. So, all of a sudden, we saw Coast Village as a place where we would get growth and expansion of water use. We then passed Ordinance 89, which would then control that expansion of water use within the district. And Ordinance 89, as you can see, affects new development in Montecito, and it also affects expanded use, for instance, existing customers that are redeveloping their properties. For a new property, a new meter in Montecito, regardless of the size, if you're one acre or larger, you'll receive a maximum, at this point, of one acre foot per year. Regardless, one acre and larger, if you are smaller than one acre in size, you will receive a pro-rata share of that one acre. Again, the district's policy at this point is, we recognize that land is valuable, people have a right to build a home. We have to, though, control the amount of water they use, and in order to sustain our current supply levels. So, we've adopted this ordinance. For expansion of use, or people that are redeveloping their properties, we have now looked at their historical usage between the fiscal years 03, 04, and 05, 06. We've set that now as an allocation, such that with that amount of water, if they come to us, we say, well, this is the water you have for your project, see if you can live within those means. And with that, we're working directly with county staff, David Ward and his staff, and they've actually been working very well with us. We issue what we call a certificate of water service availability for the project, meaning once David receives that, then he goes, okay, it looks like you have it from the district, this is your water allotment, the district has looked at your plans, they see that you can live within those means, this project can go ahead from a water standpoint, and it's been very successful so far. And I do have to commend David, he's just done a great job, as well as the other staff members. Next slide. When you look at your customer classifications, the reason why I brought this to you is you recognize that our single-family residential customers use the majority of the water, 74% of it. We have a significant number of accounts, 4,170. They are the people that actually use our water. Then typically, that's what you'll see, the commercial groups, a little different, they're smaller, but overall, we have to watch all categories, all classifications. So, that's what Ordinance 89 does. Next slide. Which brings me to 08, 09. Again, with the water supply situation in Montecito is, we're watching it very carefully. What's happened to us is, we got a 35% state water allocation in the year, calendar year 08, that was equivalent to 1,100 acre feet roughly. Normally, we're getting 1,600, and we can actually do spot purchases within the state water contractors group. For 08, 09, for the actual calendar year, excuse me, 09, they're only, right now, they're set up to give us 10%. If they give us 10% of state water in 09, it stays that way, it doesn't rain, and who can predict the rain, then we're looking at an 1,800 acre foot deficit. If we have a deficit in Montecito that great, there's a good possibility, probability, that we'll be declaring a water supply shortage emergency in Montecito. The thing is, but, this is the worst case. Right now, I've got, we're actually looking for water, we have a couple sources where we believe we can pick up to close to 2,000 acre feet of water for this water year. I will not know this for another three weeks, and this is what makes this situation more difficult than the past. In the past, it was, you had your water supply, you knew what it was, now you have state water, and you have spot markets you can perhaps purchase from. But overall, we do have a serious situation in Montecito, and we'd like the Montecito Planning Commission to recognize this, understand what Ordinance 89 does. Ordinance 89 is to control use, expansion of use in the district, and we actually, next slide. And we actually do have a public meeting set up for tomorrow, in which we're actually going to bring to the public two meetings, a new rate schedule. And this new proposed incline block rate schedule is something that we need to bring to the community. City of Santa Barbara's done something similar to this, the City of Santa Barbara was very successful in controlling demand, we now have to do this in Montecito. So, in the event that you're in the area, please come to the public meeting tomorrow. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Commissioner Gottsinger.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Has the Montecito Water District, and I'm not, I'm unclear of how much Montecito Water District serves Coast Village Road, but have we looked at, have you guys looked at some trading, trading of water with the city, given that that's really, you know, and we get, in Montecito, it's kind of a little confusing because we've got all these special districts and they overlap and stuff, you know, but if, is it possible that the Coast Village Road could be serviced by city water rather than Montecito water?
Claire, good question. What we've got in, in Montecito, as you know, the City of Santa Barbara, that's their service area, but we have, they're actually within our service boundaries. The City of Santa Barbara does not have a distribution system that can serve Coast Village Road.
Okay.
What we do have, though, what we do have, we actually are talking on a committee level, very informally now, they have overlap agreements that you may be aware of in the Barker Pass area.
Mm-hmm.
There's always a possibility that, that an overlap agreement could occur with the Coast Village Road area. And what that does is, we serve them, they give us the water that we serve. Again, this has not been brought before the board, this is more of a staff discussion level, but it does occur, it's not a new precedent, it's something that has occurred in Montecito so far. But if you noticed on the slide earlier, our commercial, which includes Summerlin, the hotels, and Coast Village Road account for about 3.9% of our usage. It's relatively small, but we do have to watch all classifications.
Okay, and then I have another question. So, Ordinance 89, you say is designed only now to address new development and expanded development. Okay, so are there any, so then it would take actually declaring a water emergency in order to cut back on the water use of existing development? Because, and I'm asking this because I totally agree with your assertion that this water use has to do with landscaping. You know, I mean, I'm clear, I work in that arena, and I'm clear that when it doesn't rain, you know, it's directly related to the rain, not necessarily, I mean, other parts of it are related to storage, but the landscape water use in the last two years has been very high, you know, because of the nature of the kinds of properties that we have in Montecito. So, is the Water District looking at any way, at coming up with specific guidelines or ordinances to have existing development pull back?
Well, the goal is, as you know, is, there's plenty of programs out there, and we actually do have a water conservation program in place. You get bill stuffers, where you send out letters, newsletters to our customers, but it seems that, I'm not sure if they're fully aware of how significant this shortage is.
Got it.
So, our meeting tomorrow's important. In fact, coming to you, the Montecito Planning Commission's important. And Claire, one point, though, you're right, because if you look at the month of January, demand in Montecito is somewhere around, what are we looking at, 200 acre feet in the month of January? You're going to move to the month of July, you're close to 800 acre foot in demand. So, it's all strictly outdoor use, and we, and I've talked to landscape architects and contractors, and they say there's a lot of overuse in the district, so we do have to do some further education.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, you know, I know you refer to the City of Santa Barbara, and when you do, when I do landscape plans in the City of Santa Barbara, I literally, only 20% of the lot can be, exterior lot area can be in lawn, and then I look around Montecito and go, oh, yeah?
Right. It's a big difference.
Yeah, you know, big difference. So, I mean, my, my thing would be to start, for your, for the district to start looking at putting some, I mean, like, major restrictions on that.
Well, the race structure is supposed to definitely encourage conservation.
Okay.
That's one of the reasons why we're introducing this.
Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you. It's my understanding that the City of Santa Barbara makes extensive use of reclaimed water, Shoreline Park, the various parks and golf courses and that kind, as well as 101 vegetation. A decade or so ago, there was considerable discussion in Montecito on developing and implementing the infrastructure to reclaim some of our water. Where do you think we are on that subject? And, a more specific question, in the event or when reclaimed water comes online, would a property owner have the option of opting into that system for the landscaping? This is probably a legal question, or could it be made mandatory for landscaping in Montecito?
Well, the way that would work, and you're right, back in 1990, we did have discussions on reclaim, and that was because we were in the middle of that severe drought. What was determined then, it was cost prohibitive to actually go that route, and what they did is, it was more financially reasonable to go ahead with a D cell plant, which the City of Santa Barbara built, we all participated in. That's no longer needed by the city or Greta, they have plenty of water. As far as reclaimed water in Montecito, the infrastructure setup for that would be enormous, very expensive, you need to cross the freeway, plus they actually have a rather limited amount of reclaim available, and we keep thinking of reclaim as being a substantial supply of water when it's not. We've actually asked the city to see whether or not they wish to service a couple of our customers with their reclaim system, which is near the Channel Drive area, but at the same time, Montecito Sanitary District is there, and they do not have tertiary treatment in place. So, if we did that, it would be something the Water District would do, and we are going to possibly look into grant funding for something of that nature. But again, the infrastructure's not there yet, but we are looking at it, but it's a limited supply, it won't, it'll help, but it's, it's not going to do what we need. We truly need the customers to cut back on the outdoor landscaping.
Just a quick follow-up. Yes, I understand that grant funding would have to be a big part of that, but would it not also be possible for the residents of Montecito to vote to support a bond measure, which would pay for the infrastructure upgrade, and thereby, we could have our lawns into perpetuity if we passed a bond measure?
Again, the amount of water that Montecito Sanitary District would be able to provide to the community, when you look at the overall demand, is very small in comparison to what's truly needed for the gardens. So, it's a limited amount of water that would seriously, it could go to the cemetery, which is right next door, because they're one of our customers. It could hit Coast Village Road, and then you can move up, but again, it's limited. It's smaller than you think. I don't have the exact number, but we are talking to the Sanitary District, because any way we can actually provide a supplemental supply within the district's going to help us, and so, but it won't solve the problem.
You didn't state it this way, but I assume that the issue on supply is the fact that so much of the water is, is being used for outside, that it's not going into the sewer system and therefore isn't available to be reclaimed.
Right.
So, you have a very limited supply. But it sounds like there could be some. I'll just throw out, I know Commissioner Burrows had talked to me about whether that kind of a system might be available for the Miramar. I'm wondering if, and I know this is maybe outside the purview of this discussion, but maybe between a project like the Miramar with very extensive outdoor landscape area and also the cemetery, there might be a place for a, some sort of a smaller system.
There may be.
So, I'd love to see that be considered, you know, as we move forward on what I think will be a long-term issue for all of us.
Absolutely, it's going to be explored.
If I could ask one other question, you haven't talked about your pricing structure, but I'm assuming you probably have a pricing structure that's going to have a base allocation that, at a lower rate, so that everybody gets a certain amount of water at some kind of, at a reasonable price, and then make the, make the clients that are using excessive amounts of water pay an increasing charge for the amount of water that they are using or misusing, as the case may be?
Well, that's, that's exactly the way the system's set up. Right now, the cost of water is, there's going to be roughly a 4%, 5% increase in the cost of water. We're going from 375 to 390. That's reasonable, and we looked at our budgets, but we're going to have a three-tier, and again, if you saw, all usage is in single-family residential. So, we do, the second tier and the third tier are priced at a higher level, and you will get, right now, we're proposing 20 units at Block 1. But we looked at the overall cost increases for the structure we're going to provide at our public meeting tomorrow night, and that's for normal water supply condition. Your bills, if you actually do conserve water, even further, a 5% reduction in your use, for the low-end users, people that are 20 units and less, their actual water cost will be less. It's, so we do recognize the sensitivity of the use of water in the lower tier, and we are charging what the cost of service is. It's when we move into the upper blocks, and we're actually now considering adding a fourth block to the single-family residential, because the interesting statistic is, 25% of the water in single-family residential, 25% of it, is used by only 5% of the customers. So, that 5%, those will probably be the ones that end up paying for the more expensive water that we have to find to satisfy the demand of the community.
That's excellent, because that's, that's how the system should work, is, is, I'm sure those last amounts of water are very expensive to obtain and should not be spread over your base rate, customer base.
Absolutely.
But it sounds like you're already there, so, I'm glad to hear that. Commissioner Phillips, I see you have your light on.
Thank you. Just quickly, the 326,000 acre feet?
Yes. 326,000 gallons, right?
No, not gallons, gallons. Not allotment. When that's reached, what happens at that point?
Well, we have, we have the ability. What will happen, we won't turn them off, but what'll happen is, is they will go over the allotment, and then there'll probably be a surcharge. You know, we haven't gotten there yet, but there'll probably be a surcharge on their bills, there'll be a letter that will go out to the customer, please recognize you're outside of what was allotted to you with your new service, and we let them know up front. And we look at the design of the project prior to giving them service, and that's the way this ordinance works. They bring in their plans, they bring in their landscaping, we look at it, you're way in excess, if they're way in excess, we point it out, they take it back to the landscape architect, change it, bring it back, that looks good, looks like you're going to meet the allocation that you're going to be provided. So, that's the way the system's working now, and, but if they do go over, there can be a surcharge, and plus, there'll be some warnings. So, we will be able to recognize those customers that are exceeding their allocation.
And that number is for a typical residential user on an acre?
Yes.
What do we do with a commercial use or a hotel use? How do we do that?
Right now, the way we're setting it up is, for instance, there's an expansion of use, for instance, one of our bigger users, which we down at the beach, the Biltmore, they come to us, and we look at, again, the allocation, the amount of water they use between 03, 04, and 05, 06. If we can hold it to that level, then we're within the means of our water supply. So, we, again, we look at it, this is what you have to live with, design your project accordingly. So, and they do, though, people are being very responsible at this point, they recognize there is a water supply situation, a problem here, and the landscape architects are being really good at the moment. They are trying to be very creative.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would guess it would, it's going to become part of our obligation to take a look at landscape plans and determine whether this is feasible?
I think so, although I'd love to see the marketplace do it. You know, don't charge that much for your base customers where you know your supply comes from, and make the people that want to use a lot, pay a lot. It'll, you know, it's just, it's just like $5 a gallon gasoline, it's very effective in reducing demand.
Right, but if there's an allocation, don't we have an obligation to a applicant to give them a heads-up that you're going to run out of water very quickly, given this plan?
Right.
I think that that would most likely occur at the Board of Architectural Review. That really will, will come, they will be the, I mean, we, there's so many projects that we don't see, we only see them if there's a land use inconsistency or something, but, so, it really will become incumbent upon the landscape architects who sit as part of MBAR to be managing that the landscape plans they're seeing, that at least- the landscape plans they're seeing that at least somewhat can be held in tow. You know, I mean, I think this is absolutely that, their department.
So they'll have to.
And certainly, certainly at the City of Santa Barbara, it, it comes under their Board of Architectural Review. Let me tell you, they go over those landscape plans with a fine-tooth comb, you know, and they, you know, you got to stay within that 20%, you know, it's only a certain amount of your si, law, systems can be in spray systems, that you have to have a certain percentage in drip. It's very specific. It's a two-page document that when you do design work at the City of Santa Barbara and the landscape, you have to meet all those requirements. And it's a really good, you know, I mean, it's really good, and it does require landscape architects to be very creative, let me tell you, you know? But it works, you know, and I do think that, you know, it, it's a combination of that and education. You don't have to have your sprinklers run three times a week to have a green lawn, you know?
Commissioner Burrows.
Oh, no question.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much, a very enlightening presentation.
Thank you for having us here, and hopefully we'll see you tomorrow night.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Ward.
So we did, Mr. Mosby's been very helpful on the projects that we've had since April, a lot of things that were late in the process of going to hearing. Some of them have already come to your board, but a lot of them at the Zodiac Administrator and at the bar, and he's been very helpful in this staff, trying to quickly process compliance with the new ordinance and our coordination going forward. So the bars are, the Montecito bars are fully informed as well, and I think Commissioner Gostek is correct, that that's really where the, the most focused attention will be appropriately at the bar level.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Overall.
I just, in light of Commissioner Gottstanker's comments about the rigor with which applicants in the City of Santa Barbara are scrutinized and the criteria there, I, it just occurred to me, is there a need for us to augment the architectural guidelines in some way for Montecito to provide a similar guidance to what they, they do in the City of Santa Barbara? Would that be something that warrants being studied and, and perhaps proposed?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Overall, it may be during the next six months, see how the process works, see if there are issues that arise at the bar and not being able to sort of just do the normal workout on the project on a case-by-case basis. That's how our department, working even with county council and our communications with Mr. Mosby, is we'll see how things occur at the bar and just kind of watch it as a case-by-case basis. But that, that may be an outcome. We think the coordination effort at this point, and the local arc, landscape architects working on the project will be very cognizant of it. And the pre, sort of pre-notification that the Water District is seeking as well, they're wanting to have that initial contact, communication on what the water allocation would be to their, their properties, and then how that would fit into their development for new project.
Thank you very much. Last item on our administrative agenda is the minutes of our meeting of May 21st. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any comments on the unapproved minutes that are in front of us? And if not, I would entertain a motion for their approval.
Served.
All second. Moved and seconded for the approval of the minutes of our hearing of May 21st. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Aye.
Aye.
No abstain.
And Commissioner Overall abstains, but otherwise, all in favor. And that takes us to our standard agenda, which is the Grissini's Single Family Dwelling Edition at 1775 Fernall Point Lane. Do you need a minute to set up, or are you ready to go? Ready to go? Okay. Mr. Heaton? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Pardon the record.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You know, I'm just getting ahead of myself again. I, I just hate all these little administrative things we have to do here.
The following is the hearing on the request of Ken Mano, agent for the owner, to consider case number 07CDH15, application filed on May 8th, 2007, and to accept the exemption pursuant to Section 15301E of the State Guidelines for Implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you very much. Mr. Heaton.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Jim Heaton. I'm the planner for this coastal development permit, 07CDH15, is for addition to an existing single-family dwelling. I'll give you a brief presentation of the project and conclude with staff's recommendation. I'd like to note that staff has presented you with a memo supplemental to our staff report. I'll be addressing the information in that memo during my presentation. The proposed project is located on Fernall Point Lane, a private road. It is a 1E 1-zone lot adjacent to the ocean in an urban area of Montecito. The project consists of a coastal development permit for construction of a first-floor addition of approximately 238 square feet and a second-story addition of approximately 1,388 square feet to an existing residence of 6,272 square feet. The new total gross square footage would be 8,383 square feet. Also included in the project is conversion of a crawl space of 86 square feet to be a wine cellar attached to an existing garage and a guesthouse accessory structure, as well as spa relocation and landscaping. Here's the project site plan with the property lines in bold. The single-family residence is located here. Beach cabana is shown here, the spa. The guesthouse is located here, and the gardener's cottage is here. At this time, I'd like to point out that a supplemental memo with updated plans has been submitted to the commission. The project site includes legal non-conforming structures, including a guesthouse and gardener's cottage. The gardener's cottage is not part of the proposed project and was not correctly shown on the plans. The revised survey and new plan sheets now appear to accurately show the existing 795 square-foot structure. That's the survey that's been attached to that supplemental memo. The current supplemental now is two surveys. One identifies the property boundaries and the mean high tide, and the other identifies the structures on the property. Staff recommends the commission add a condition to the permit as outlined in the supplemental memo to require supplemental of one survey that is stamped by a licensed surveyor and incorporates both of the submitted surveys. The proposed project includes, in addition to the main residence, including a 238 square-foot first-floor addition and a 1,388 square-foot second-story addition. You can see the string line in this graphic here. As shown, the existing first floor is beyond the string line. However, the second-story addition would not cross. Proposed development would not impact public views. Here's the east elevation of the project, the second-story addition pointed by the arrow. These are the north and south elevations. The south elevation faces the ocean. Here's a picture of the structure from the south, and here you can see lines representing the story poles that were placed for Montecito Board of Architectural Review's site visit. These show the proposed second-story addition. Also included in the project is conversion of an 86-square-foot crawl space to be a wine cellar, as seen here. This is attached to an accessory structure that includes a garage and storage room and is located below an existing guesthouse. The proposed project is consistent with coastal plan policies, including policies which require adequate services, require the protection of public views, require the project be compatible with the neighborhood, and require protection of cultural and historic resources. The neighborhood compatibility policy, coastal plan policy 4-4 requires the project be compatible with the existing community, and coastal plan policy 4-9 requires the structure be designed not to impact views from Highway 101. The project does not impact public views. This picture shows the existing structure with the proposed additions in yellow. The additions would not intrude in the skyline as seen here from the beach. And here's a view of the project site from Highway 101. The proposed project site is in the grove of trees here, would not be significantly visible from, to the public. With the proposed additions, the existing residence would be 8,383 gross square feet. Although the applicable net floor area of 7,195 square feet exceeds the recommended maximum floor area of 5,100 square feet by 41%, the residence would be comparable in size to surrounding homes. In reviewing the project, MBAR made favorable conceptual comments. The project was considerably reduced in size from the initial proposal, has been directed to return for preliminary final review following a permit approval by your commission. In our supplemental memo to you today, we've recommended that your commission add a condition that will require the applicant to address the screening and their window placement as requested by MBAR. A historic letter report was prepared by Preservation Planning Associates. In that report, the historian states that the existing structure no longer retains sufficient integrity to be considered a significant historic resource under CEQA. The project meets all ordinance requirements, including adequate lot size, setbacks for proposed development, and is lower than the maximum height of 25 feet. The neighbor's attorney, Derek Weston, in a letter to your commission dated June 16th, 2008, raised concerns about development adjacent to the gardener's cottage. Here's a picture of the survey dated June 16th, 2008, submitted by the applicant to verify the structure's location. You can see the structure crosses over the property line to the north and to the east. This is a legal non-conforming structure that, according to historic letter report, was built around 1929, prior to permit requirements. No work is currently proposed to this structure. It does appear to match previous plans. A building permit for remodel was approved in 2003. The project did not involve structural change, did not trigger the requirement for a coastal development permit, and did not affect the legal non-conforming status of the structure. In Weston's letter, concerns were raised about work done adjacent to the structure. The landscaping shed and irrigation referenced are on the neighbor's property. Thus, while they may constitute a zoning violation, they are not on the subject property and therefore not something that should prevent this commission from making necessary findings for approval of the project before you today. Staff's recommendation is that the commission adopt the required findings, accept the CEQA exemption, approve the project as amended today. Thank you. This concludes staff's presentation.
So, site visits, ex parte communication commissioners. Commissioner Phillips, I'll start with you.
I, I did visit the site, and I had an extensive ex parte discussion with the neighbor to the east, John Klink. And it's difficult to know what's going to be coming into evidence. But I was, I was read portions of an email, a communication between the applicant and Mr. Klink, wherein the applicant recognized that he was, that the cottage was on Mr. Klink's property, and that his, his work on Mr. Klink's property is, is to make it look better for his cottage. I don't think the proposed second-story addition was addressed. So that is, the only part of the ex parte that you may not hear is that.
Commissioner Burrows.
I did not visit the site.
Commissioner Overall.
I didn't visit the site recently, but I'm familiar with it.
Commissioner Gottstanker.
Yeah, I did visit the site, and I had no ex parte communication.
I als, excuse me, Commissioner Burrows?
I just wanted to add for the record that I am familiar with the site, but did not visit it for this purpose.
Right. I did visit the site and also had extensive communication with the neighbor and council. And we'll see what comes out in our testimony as to whether any of that is not presented today, and if so, I'll discuss it at, at that point. Please.
Well, interesting. Mechanical failures.
I just thought it, this, this is a good time for me, first, to thank Commissioner Phillips for his diligence in trying to identify matters that might not be known to the rest of, of your commission. And I know that the chair will, as soon as there's any information that may not be known to the rest of the commission and the public, that, that you have learned, that you will disclose it and allow everybody to comment on it.
Yeah. I think, I think it's really important that we be diligent about this. I know sometimes the, the timing is difficult, because often the material comes out, especially in the, especially when you have someone like, that's interested in, in providing perspective. They usually are very good about getting that information out, but not always, not always. But thank you. I'll put it back to staff, but I think the applicant probably has a, a presentation or the applicant's representatives. Please.
Good morning, Commissioner, and Mr. Chairman and planning commissioners. Thank you very much for hearing our application this morning. Jim actually did a very good presentation, and I find that I probably have more slides and pictures than we need to go through. So if you indulge me, I'm going to take some of those out and just go straight to the meat of the order, so that we don't have to review this twice and shorten this. Okay, so that should make it considerably shorter. All righty, the subject property that we're talking about is the Grissinis' lot right there. They're, they're the first lot when you enter the gate into Fernall Point, as you recognize when you, when you visited the site. All of the lots, as you go further down or further east, the lots get smaller, and the houses relative to the lot seem to be filling the lot more than the Grissinis themselves, which seems to be a fairly big and open site. And both the Grissini site and the neighbor's site were built and designed by, not built by, but designed by the same architect. And so they share a lot of the same architectural features, although the, the Klink property has a style that's more familiar with that architect. He's from Pasadena, where the Grissinis have some portions of their property that look like the Klink's residence in his more normal style, and then, but the actual main house is in a different style that, more of a Monterey colonial style, which was addressed in the architectural historical letter. You can go to the next one, Nick. Originally, the, the Grissinis proposed that they would take this front elevation of this garage, which matches the Klink's architectural style, and convert it, or change it into looking more like the style of their home. After the report was produced, it, it became clear that that, and recommended that that style matches the neighbor's house, and it would be something that they'd be interested in keeping and recommended that they keep the style of that. So that was withdrawn from the original proposal. So this building here only gets the little wine cellar added to the, to the underside. Next picture. It also turns out that there's a lot of structures that are right adjacent to each other on the site, and so there's a mixing of the style, as well as the mixing of the, the buildings being very close to the property line, because it was developed many years ago. This project was actually a project that we had in our office before the Grissinis purchased it. This is the ground-floor addition that was being reviewed by the county at the time the Grissinis purchased it. This is the ground floor. Nick, can you go to the next? And when they purchased this, they, there was a proposal for a second-story addition in this L shape. They decided at that time, that was in 1994, not to build the second story, just to improve portions of it on the first floor. But in their mind, they always kind of felt that they would execute this design at some future date. future date. Next, please. And so when we started the project, we actually, in their mind, they were actually going to add this wing that was towards the top of the sheet here, towards the east. After a long review, it was determined that, and recommended that, if that development went that way, the neighbor was concerned that that would block their light and views and constituted something they were hoping that the Grissini's would reconsider. After a long consideration by them, they did pull the addition back, kept it just to the front, pulled their master bedroom addition, they eliminated a large portion of the program off of the setback towards the east. And really, they feel like they've made a long process of answering and bringing the development into something that's more compatible with the neighbor's wishes. So you can see here on the top, it's kind of a footprint of the original proposal that came before the MBAR that we're adding in that area, similar to the 94 design, and that's all been pulled back. And the concern at that time was, again, the windows that were much closer to the property line, looking down into the neighbor's yard and blocking light, that's all been pulled back. It was recommended 10 feet, we've pulled back 16 feet and eliminated a substantial portion of the program. So the view that they're after is really from the master bedroom. That's one shot. You can go to the next one, Nick. That's the next, looking towards the, I guess that's the east, and then the last one, over the beach, is directly east, which you can see the chimneys in the way, and this is kind of what they would see from their bedroom. And they're really looking over the tops of the ridge there, and they're really not looking into the yard at all. This is the planting that's along the side yard there. There's a number of palm trees. There's an avocado tree that looks to be sickly. We can go to the next one. That's the Klink's property straight through. There's a little bit closer side yard there, but what you can see further down the alley there, it's, there's some pine trees that are between the two properties that seem to be the natural thing that would be added in order to provide additional screening between the Grissini's and the Klink's so that there would be more privacy into that yard. And I think that's the direction that the Montecito Design Review Board, here's the pine trees themselves, would like to see added to the proposal in order to make sure that there isn't any intrusion looking into that yard, which from the current location is actually quite difficult to do, but that would certainly add some insurance. Next one. And that's the Montecito Design Review Board actually standing in the Klink's yard, looking that direction. There's the pine trees off to the right, and then the big avocado tree, which is not doing as well as it was before. That's actually on the Klink's property. Next. So just wrapping up, this is the little guest house, which I think Jim did a good job describing, and hence why we pulled the little addition we had on here to change the style away. It matches the Klink's property, actually, and it's, there's some easements that swap their properties back and forth because they were built before the current regulations, and those are a private matter that I think Jim has alluded to. Next, in the last slide. And the last one is just the little spa tub and the extension. Nick can kind of point out the original location is there, and then the current location is there. So, thank you very much.
If you'd hold on, I'm sure we're going to have some questions of you. Commissioner Phillips, you have your light on, so I'll let you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could you show us the elevation of the addition? And I want to see the windows looking down onto the Klink yard. So would it be an eastern view from the proposed second-story addition?
Yeah.
So, what's on the bottom of the sheet are the existing elevations, and then up above are the proposed. So if you look on the left-hand side of the sheet there, you can see the addition is to the left, and there's a chimney, and there's three windows that are on that elevation, one, two, and three. And there's a chimney blocking one of the windows, and the other window is where the master bedroom bed is on that wall. And then the furthest one out is in a little sitting area right there. So those are the views they're trying to capture.
Those views are looking east?
Yes.
And that isn't much of a view. I mean, that's really looking back on the highway. It's also looking down into the Klink's yard. Is there a way to make those windows higher, to catch some of the light, maybe, to catch a far view and not to be looking at their picnic on Sunday afternoon?
Yeah. If you look at the one picture where we had from that location, the roof and the chimney actually block looking down into that yard, you can see right there. And so they actually are getting the distant view if you were even standing at that wall, trying to peer into their yard. So this is the location of that wall and where those windows would be, especially the one furthest back.
The wall's going to be closer, and I'm going to be standing next to the chimney looking down, right?
No. This chimney.
You're going to pull back that far?
Yes. We're 16 feet back. Originally, we were at that chimney. We've pulled 16 feet back. So there is that amount of roof and that distance from the property line. Yeah, you can see it right there. So that roof there is what you're looking over. And if you look at the way the master bedroom is set up, the bed is at the back wall, and so that window, that the furthest one to the left of the sheet, go to the, yeah, is really for light to come in and balance the light of the bedroom. It's not something that they're standing there looking at because the sitting room is actually further out towards the south. Yeah.
But if you wanted to, you could stand there and look into the Klink's yard.
Well, if you go back to that last one, Nick, you really can't see his yard from there. But of course, we're perfectly willing to.
If you would, explain to me, where is this picture taken from?
Yeah.
So it's taken from what would be a couple feet inside the planned bedroom? Is that correct?
Yeah. Standing on the current roof.
This picture here is taken from this location.
Yeah, that's the view they want. I don't know why, other than light, you'd want a view going east. It really isn't much, it's not terribly scenic. Guess you get a bit of the coast. But if you made those windows higher, you'd ensure privacy to the neighbor and also give you the light you want, and a distant view, I think. Was that discussed with MBAR?
Yes, and that's our next, at preliminary, they'd like us to propose either modifications to the window and/or landscaping. At that last meeting, we, I suggested maybe we omit that window. They said, no, it's a nice window for the light into that room. They said, that's not necessary. It's really more further study with the landscaping and the trees, and maybe placement of, or the size of the window. The actual window is designed, according to the historical report, that he used a six over six in this particular building, and so that matches the original windows in the house.
How tall is the piece of fireplace that's sitting up there?
Oh, that looks like about two feet above the ridge, so it just meets the.
And the picture's taken from approximately the same height, about two feet above the, well, he's standing on it, but it's not looking down on the top of the fireplace. It's looking, he's down, somebody's sitting on the fireplace, sitting on the roof taking a picture, not standing on the roof taking a picture.
Right.
The issue I'm addressing, and I'll speak to it, having met with the Klink's, is their big issue is, or at least one of their substantial issues, is privacy in their backyard. And I'm trying to figure out from this picture whether that's a real issue or not a real issue, and it's a little difficult to tell. And the further issue that I'll bring up is, given that the site plan that we had in front of us wasn't accurate, it makes me question some of the accuracy of the documents in front of us, and makes it difficult to determine what's an appropriate outcome here. I always find that when we have inaccurate materials, that it's very difficult to reach a resolution. And it's real obvious that the site plan that we have in front of us is completely made up as relates to the gardener's cottage, having seen a survey of the property next door. So I'm not sure who produced those documents, but I'm leery of the material that's in front of us here, so it's going to make it more difficult for us to go through this process today. I'll just tell you that right out. But this, I'm not sure, gives us an accurate representation of the privacy that's obtained in the Klink's backyard from this. So I'm wondering what it would look like if somebody was standing at a real window, whether they would in fact be looking down at this yard or not. So maybe you could address that for us.
The thing to note is that.
Yeah, you're not on a mic, so.
Yeah.
The thing to notice is that the floor is below the existing roof, and what I was attempting to do when I took the picture is taking it at what would be eye level when standing on the floor. So if you notice, the windows are actually below the chimney, they're not above the chimney. So in that picture of the view, I was attempting to take a picture of eye level when standing at the finished floor.
And in terms of pulling back from that property line, as I say, it was recommended to pull back 10 feet. We've pulled that back 16 feet. I think if you actually, put that picture back up. If you actually looked there and you were purposely trying to look back at their yard, because Nick is actually right in the middle of this roof, you don't even really see their house from here, and you may see a little bit of the garden itself. It would really be a purposeful, what would I say, binocular type of view to actually look into that yard. It's certainly not the intention of the Grissini's to look at their activities in that yard, and we're certainly willing to landscape that area so that there's more trees between the two. And we can adjust that window higher if that is the pleasure of the, what did you call it, Jim? A condition of approval. And we would work with the MBAR to make that, to satisfy that requirement.
Good. Okay, proceed.
Hi.
Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you. The trees that we're looking at, are those on the applicant's property or the neighbor's property?
The avocado tree that's right there is on the neighbor's property, and it's become quite sickly recently, and so we would look to replace, or put a new tree between the Grissini's house and the property line itself.
But that, I'm sorry, that tree is on the Klink's property?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
My presentation is finished.
Your presentation's finished.
Yeah.
Commissioners?
Do we still have any questions?
We sure are. Commissioner Gottsenger?
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is a question for the applicant or for staff, but a determination has been made, that's in the staff report, and I'm sure that the applicants align with this, that this project is 41% over the existing guidelines, and that it is, in fact, does, is, it's comparable, the staff statement is that it's comparable in size to the surrounding neighborhood, and that we have a, and that it is consistent with Coastal Plan Policy Policy 4-4. But I don't see in the staff report or any of the information that's been submitted to us, how was that determined? In the past, when we've received, when it's up to us at a hearing like this to make that determination, we have been able to see the FAR reports and how that determination was determined. So I want to see it. You know, I mean, I'm unwilling to say that this is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood when I happen to know that most, that neighborhood is probably, give or take, about 30% over the existing guidelines, not 41%. You know, so I would, if that work has been done, I would like to see it.
Yeah, they have a copy.
Thank you.
I think at this point, we'll open ourselves up for public comment, and I do have one speaker slip, which is Derek Weston, who is the representative of the Klink's.
Mr. Chair, I can respond to Commissioner Gottsenger's.
Yeah, why don't you give us a second?
Okay.
We'll let Mr. Weston speak, and we'll take a look, I'd like to look at the document too.
Okay.
We'll have a chance to address you on that subject.
Good morning, Chair Barick, members of the commission. Thank you very much. My name is Derek Weston, and I'm the attorney representing John and Pat Klink, the immediate neighbors to the east at 787 and also 795 Fernalpoint. The three issues which have all been touched on are our ongoing concerns about zoning violations on the, what's called the gardener's cottage north of Pique Creek, concerns about plan integrity, which you have raised, Chair Barick, and then overall concerns about privacy, size, bulk, and scale, which you've also touched upon. So it is important that this property is already unusual in that it has two separate residences, the principal residence and the gardener's cottage, plus a guest house. As you know, the guest house, I'm sorry, the gardener's cottage is seriously nonconforming. On the southern end, it encroaches at least several feet, and on the northern end, close to 10 feet, and the drawing that Mr. Heaton has put up, we believe, is accurate. There was some remodeling done in the early 1990s, I think in 1994. To be honest, we don't know exactly what was done, but we're concerned about that. We have received conflicting statements from staff. In general, it is our understanding, I may not be correct about this, but it has been our understanding that with respect to properties that actually are built across someone else's property line, the county is more strict about not requiring, not allowing perpetuation of those uses, and that they really want to see those corrected either by a lot-line adjustment or by elimination of the encroaching property. Other types of nonconforming uses, perhaps encroachment into setback, but not across the property line, it was our understanding, are not treated as seriously. But in this instance, there's even more than that, because the Grissini's have been, to tell you the truth, rather remarkably aggressive about simply using their neighbor's property. Recently, they installed an underground sump pump on the Klink property to benefit the gardener's cottage. They've built a patio with brick. They took out Klink landscaping and put in new landscaping, installed an irrigation system. All of this was on the Klink's property without any permission or even notice. They've also started building a wall and a gate on the north side of the property. I believe that that is not in, actually on the Klink's property, but it was within the Union Pacific right of way, which raises separate questions. We're not sure that the location and configuration of that wall were shown correctly, a separate concern. And then if you'd be good enough to help me, Jim. Yesterday, when we were visiting the site, we were, it's very hard with the lights on, were pretty shocked to discover that a new structure has been built. If you show the prior drawing, excuse me, photo, this is a view towards the northwest of the essentially east side of this gardener's cottage, and you can see that space between the two trees. And a new building has been put there, I think it's a storage shed, small, but nonetheless a new structure, that looks pretty substantial, and that's just completely new, everything you see directly in front of you with those windows. Now, as a general rule, I believe that a small storage shed does not require a permit, but besides the fact this happens to be on somebody else's property, it is within an ESH. This is very, very close to Pique Creek. And if you'd show that other drawing, you can, I'm sorry, the one right after that, you'll get a sense of how close this all is to Pique Creek. Now, staff has taken a position that, to be honest, I think is very strange, that is to say that these zoning violations, construction and development on someone else's property, are not a violation of zoning on the Grissini property, but on the Klink's property. Now, we all know that no one can obtain any permit for development of their property if they are in zoning violation. Staff. if they are in zoning violation. Staff's interpretation would lead to the conclusion that the Gressinis are not in violation, but the Klink's, who haven't done anything wrong, are. And to be honest, that just seems backwards. Now, I understand that zoning violations don't attach to people. In a sense, they attach to property. And certainly, these violations are located on the Klink property, but they were done as a part of the Gressinis' work, done by the Gressinis, and they're associated with that project. And at least, they have very unclean hands. And it seems inappropriate to me that they be allowed a very substantial addition to their property when they are the cause of a very serious zoning violation. They've built buildings in an ESH and done other development that simply is inappropriate. So we are hoping that you will require that those issues be addressed, either by removing all of the encroaching structures or waiting until a lot line adjustment is processed. We would be happy to sell this property to the Gressinis and have discussed that with them. We would also like a careful investigation of the permits that were issued in 1994. It's our understanding that no land use permit was issued. They were just over-the-counter building permits. We would like to make sure we understand exactly what was approved and what was done. We have reason to be concerned. Over the last few months, they began building an arbor on the south side of that gardener's cottage without any permits at all, and now they've stopped that. But the steel posts that would receive those arbors are still in place. So we think everything should be done, of course, only with permits, and should be looked at very carefully, and this nonconforming use should not be perpetuated. I'll talk only very briefly about plan accuracy, because Chair Barick has mentioned it. But the plan that was submitted contrary to requirements, contrary to policy, and contrary to the direct instructions from the MBAR misrepresented the location of this cottage. It's also different from other drawings we've seen. And of course, we haven't seen whatever was submitted Thursday or Friday. We're not sure if this new structure is shown or not. But full, accurate, and complete drawings in which we can have confidence with respect to the entire property are a prerequisite to any rational review. And finally, briefly, let me just talk about the design issues. Several of you have mentioned the privacy issues. Those are of paramount concern to the Klink's. Because of our concern about the accuracy of the drawings, we are concerned about the representations. We appreciate and want to compliment staff for going to the couple of climbing up on the roof to try to visualize this. But we would like to have that issue completely resolved, either with a careful sightline study that documents that from those windows, they will not be able to look into the backyard of the ocean yard of the Klink's, or story poles in which the windows are mocked up. It is my understanding that when the story poles were up, you could actually see that side of the house. So I'm not sure... I'm not sure that it's accurate that those windows would not look into the Klink's property, and I really would like that issue conclusively resolved. The Klink's also have approval for a little terrace area on the front part of their house, and there may be privacy issues for that terrace with respect to these new windows. I have not seen the FAR study that Commissioner Gottsinger requested and would like to. This is a very significant addition on a property that's already well over the FAR and already has two residences plus a guest house, so I think we should look at that question very closely. So I've taken a long time, and I don't want to repeat, but we really think that it is premature until these zoning questions are really put to bed, that any further approvals be issued. We think it's gone on too long. It's too extreme. It appears that the applicant is just being shockingly brazen and using adjacent property and doing development without a permit. And someone who's doing that is not in a position to come before the county and ask for additional approvals. So thank you very much. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Phillips, I see you have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Weston, just two quick questions. Is it your position that as a condition precedent for us to approve the applicant's request, that the cottage need to be not encroaching? Assume there was no creative work with the landscaping and all that. Is the cottage encroachment enough for us to require as a condition precedent that that be cured before we look at the addition?
That is our request. To be honest with you, I'm not 100% sure that you have the authority to do so, but I think you do. That's something I'd like to discuss.
Do you think our authority is greater because it's an Article II case as opposed to four? Do you see any distinction there?
To be honest, I'd have to think about that. The fact that it's in the coastal zone, that no coastal development permit has been issued, concerns me. And then, the extent of the changes that have been made to the structure in 1994, I think are relevant. If the changes have perpetuated the use, that may be improper, and that may make the nonconforming use inappropriate. And I think it has been county policy in the past to require that lot line adjustments be implemented to address situations like this. Now, I know County Council wants to comment, and he's shaking our head. We would like to look at this very, very carefully, because it's gone on too long. We have an opportunity to correct it, and it should be corrected.
Mr. Allen, I'd love to hear you weigh in on this subject, if you would.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I have not found anything in Article II that gives us the authority to treat a legal, nonconforming structure, which so far as we know, this is, and so far as we know, the later additions were permitted as well. And assuming that's true, this is a legal, nonconforming structure, and nothing in Article II directs us to look differently at a structure which encroaches across property lines. You know, that being said, your jurisdiction and purview in looking at this permit is to look at, as your findings state, the subject property. Staff is reminding me as well that on this property, though it's really not relevant, directly relevant to what I'm saying, there's apparently an easement that exists between the property owners. And that... It's my understanding, I've been told, that that easement allows for the existence of this nonconforming structure on the Klink's property. Again, that's not directly relevant. It speaks to a history between the two property owners at some point that recognized that this came onto their property and that they allowed... You know, they made an accommodation to recognize this encroachment. But again, under Article II, as it is written, whatever, you know, policy efforts may have been made to try to do something, which may or may not be true in the past, to try to encourage the removal or adjustment of property lines of structures that cross property lines, that's not in our ordinance that I see, and it's not something that you may do through your action on this project. I'd also note that we don't look to the character of applicants and their actions, laudable or otherwise, off their property when we look at whether the findings may be made or should be made for a specific project.
I understand that point. The issue that comes to mind for me is when we're dealing with a situation like this where we have a piece of property that is substantially over the design guidelines, we have a lot of latitude, because part of that is... Runs directly to neighborhood compatibility, and that couldn't be more direct than between two neighbors that are directly adjacent to each other. So I think it puts me in the situation of feeling like I do need to consider some of these issues of how well they get along and are able to... Maybe not "get along" might not be the right word, but whether there is a compatibility problem based on historic...
Well, Mr. Chair...
So maybe you could help directly on that.
I will try to, because I think that's important. When your commission looks at compatibility issues, Article... I mean, local Coastal Plan Policy 4.4 in urban areas, new structures shall be compatible with the scale and character of the surrounding neighborhood. You're not looking at relationships between neighbors, you're looking at relationships between structures and neighborhood character in terms of topography, perhaps, and things of that nature.
So we really look at the structures themselves and not how they directly relate to the neighbor, directly adjacent.
Well, you may look at the relationship of structure to structure between neighbors. I'm not saying that.
Okay, I see.
That's a little different. But your look at this project in terms of Policy 4.4 and in terms of the FAR guidelines and so on, should be based on those principles of structural compatibility between the adjacent properties and between properties in the neighborhood, FARs and their appropriateness in terms of the surrounding neighborhood and other FARs, and relative sizes of lots, and how it fits on that beach and so on. Those are appropriate things for you to consider. But I'd urge you not to consider, discuss, let into your deliberations extraneous factors, which there are other mechanisms to address of off-site construction and so on.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. That helps. Commissioner Gottsinger?
Mr. Chair, I have to make a time-certain personal call to Santiago Chile right now, so I'm going to step down for... And the call shouldn't take me any more than five minutes. So I just, you know, and I just have to do it.
Okay.
I apologize.
If it's acceptable, let's just take a five-minute break, or... Actually, we've been here for an hour and a half. We'll take a seven, 10-minute break, and we'll come back at 10 to the hour, if that's acceptable, everyone.
Thank you so much for your involvement.
Chu.
Yeah, Chu, thank you. You told me twice, it didn't stick. Yeah, Chu. I got it. Well, that'll do it.
Left shoe, right shoe.
That'll do it. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Chair Barick and commissioners. My name is Vadim Chu. I'm the architect for John and Pat Klink. I'll keep my comments brief as they've already been brushed upon, but I wanted to come back to one major point regarding the 1994 permit that does actually relate to the subject property, and then that does put it into your purview. It's not clear to us that the gardener's cottage was portrayed correctly in the 1994 documents. Further, I have reviewed them, and I do think that there were structural changes. It's my opinion that structural changes, alterations, were made as part of that permit. And what's really strange, and why I call this more into question, is there's no evidence of... There's a building permit, but there's no evidence of a coastal development permit or even a zoning exemption, which leads me to question whether or not zoning even looked at this, the 1994 building permit. And if they did, if they... The point of coastal development permit or even a zoning exemption would be for them to have a chance to review the zoning requirements, which certainly would have shown the structural changes that were made and the encroachment. It's hard for me to believe that that could have been done without zoning review. And so I would just like you to consider that, because it is directly related to the subject parcel. And I think it would be appropriate to continue this project until we have more time to review what was actually approved or not even looked at by zoning in 1994, because I think it does perpetuate a nonconforming use through structural changes. And certainly, the two posts that are up there today are just a glaring violation also of additional structural work that's been done without permits, again, on the subject property. So I do believe it is within your purview to make these considerations, or at least give us some time to be able to review them more accurately with regards to what actually happened and didn't happen. Again, hard for me to believe that there's no zoning approval or exemption that would have indicated that zoning even reviewed this in 1994. So I believe this is not a legal, nonconforming structure, but that its legalness was extinguished by virtue of the 1994 structural alterations, and therefore, it is an illegal, nonconforming structure, in my opinion. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chu. Would you make the last statement one more time? The last sentence.
I believe that the structural alterations that occurred on the 1994 building permit, without the benefit of zoning review, were structural in nature and therefore extinguished the nonconforming nature of that... The legal, nonconforming nature of the building, and made it therefore an illegal, nonconforming building.
Okay. If you would, let's... Can we address the issues of the main house and how it relates to the Klink's property next door, and specifically, the issue that seems to be of some concern between the two neighbors, which is privacy between the two? Because I think that's probably... Some of these other issues are really kind of peripheral to that, I think. They're unfortunate neighborhood issues, but they're not really before us right now. So we had a... There's a concern by the Klink's that the addition that's being added to the main house is going to eliminate the privacy in their backyard. Are you concerned that that's an issue?
Yes, I am. Chair Barick?
And maybe you can explain how, because it did look to me from that last photograph taken on the roof, that maybe privacy in their backyard is not an actual concern.
I would like to respectfully disagree. I think that photo was a little misleading in the fact that it's somewhat telescopic. It doesn't show the broad range of what you can and can't see from that photo on the Klink's property. And I myself visited the site when the story poles... The current story poles were up, and they are quite visible from the Klink's rear... The lawn in the back and the patio. And further, I'm sure most of the commissioners that are... That remember the project that the Klink's brought before you two years ago, proposed a balcony off of the master bedroom that is cheek-to-jowl with what's being proposed. So privacy would be an issue. I really... That balcony has not been constructed, but permits are ready and pending. And so not only is the garden and the yard is that privacy in question, and I firmly believe it is by viewing the story poles and where that window is on the plans, but also from the future balcony of the Klink's, that's probably even more heavily impacted privacy-wise. Thank you.
Well, I'm... You hang with me here for a second. I'm not sure if it's appropriate for us to look at privacy on a balcony on a second story. You know, by its very nature, that's asking a lot. But I think there is a reasonable expectation when somebody's building substantially over the FAR, that backyard is something we can consider. So I'm really trying to focus down on that one. What... In your estimation, what kind of changes could be made with... There's a suggestion by the MBAR related to looking at those windows and landscaping. Is that something you've considered or tried to address within this plan, as to how that might be resolved in a reasonable way between the two neighbors?
Well, landscaping is certainly a viable option for screening. However, in my experience, all my years of experience, landscaping has never been depended upon solely as a method of providing privacy and screening. That window frankly looks straight into the rear yard of the Klink's. It's my opinion that it could be... The massing should probably be pulled back even further to ensure more privacy, and that would also reduce the square footage and bring it more into compliance with the FARs in the neighborhood. The elimination of that window would also be paramount to the privacy issue as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrows, I see you have a question.
Thank you. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate place to ask this question of staff and council. Do you want me to go ahead on this? As we have more discussion on this project, it seems more and more ill-defined to... As we have more discussion on this project, it seems more and more ill-defined to me. I'm not sure what the issues are before us, what we, what is within our jurisdiction to address. Clearly, the 1994 permit and whether or not that was in compliance are issues. But I'm not sure what's before us today. So maybe a little bit of clarity on that or let's continue this until we can have clarity.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Burrows, members of the Commission. The evidence you've heard is that a building permit was issued in 1994 for the structure. If a building permit was issued and the cottage was previously legal, non-conforming, the building permit was issued, it is a legal, non-conforming structure. And so that issue, that is the issue of its extension across the property, that really is not before you. I want to add to that comment that Mr. Chu mentioned that perhaps a coastal development permit should have been pursued and so on and so forth. But I don't know. It may be true, it may not be true. The county may have erred in its processing. But if the fact is that the county issued a building permit for that structure as it now exists, then it is a legal, non-conforming structure. So I don't think it's an issue that we need to research.
And if there were non-compliance with the building permit, would that put it within our issue?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Burrows, if the building was, does not conform to the building permit and the non-compliance is within the property line of the subject property, that could raise an issue. But it's my understanding that these issues relate to construction on the, outside the property line. So it's, if that is so, it is not an issue for you.
Thank you. Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chu, just briefly, the six-over-six windows that the applicant's architect is proffering as the best look. I thought I noticed some circular windows further back in the property and those can typically be a little higher. Would, in your view, would that wreck the architectural integrity of that building to not have the six-over-six, but maybe two higher ones where light and some distant higher view could be achieved?
As part of this proposal?
Yeah.
I think that would help, certainly, yeah. That would help. And it is a, an architectural component that is part of both of those, both the Clinks and the Grissinis home. Both have circular windows and that was part of their architecture, yes. So that would be one potential solution. But the location itself is still central to the point of privacy. You know, I mean, if the window's up so high, I guess that it lets light in, but you can't see out of it.
Well, it solves that, you know, the backyard issue. I don't know.
It is a potential solution.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Chair, one quick question of staff. What is our obligation with a building permit issued for the balcony? Should we be looking at that balcony as if it's going to be built in terms of neighbor impact or should we ignore it since it hasn't been built?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Phillips, are you referring to the balcony on the neighbor's property?
I understand that the Clinks have a valid permit for a balcony on their home. And if we're looking at privacy issues, should we assume that's going, that it's there or should we ignore it?
Mr. Chair, I'm just going to jump in here for while staff is figuring out what they're going to say.
Please do.
Our architectural guidelines are pretty specific when it comes to the protection of privacy and views, you know. And I do believe, I don't have them in front of me, but I do believe that under the privacy issues, it, we, you know, recommend that we protect the privacy of, and I believe the word is major living areas. And I think this is where Chairman Barrett was headed, is that in the past, we really have not really looked at second-story, you know, privacy issues between an outdoor living space and an outdoor living space, you know. And in my opinion, because that's how we've done it in the past, for me, this is not an issue whether the balcony is built or not. You know, I mean, what, just because you build a balcony, the first balcony, then anybody else now has to protect your privacy and they can't do what they want? We don't have the mechanism to do that, you know. It's just not within the documents that we operate from.
Yeah, there's no right to that privacy.
Yeah.
But I thought it was a part of our good neighbor policy that we make.
No, our good neighbor policy is views into major living areas and the drawings are very specific about that. Not here, there, and everywhere, but just the views into, like, the major area. Now, the views into the backyard living space, that's one thing, but a balcony, I can't worry, I'm just not concerned about the privacy of this neighbor's balcony, whether it's built or not, for me. I'm not going, I mean, I have other concerns, but not that.
Good exchange. Thank you. Mr. Chu, I think if there's not more questions, we're done.
Is there an answer to my question? In spite of Claire's view?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Phillips, the Montecito Board of Architectural Review took a look at the project with the context and neighborhood and the conditions that exist currently. So I think that's the basis for their analysis there.
If there's no one else.
Thank you, I think.
They wouldn't have looked at the approved projects in the neighborhood that weren't built yet.
We don't have any more speaker slips, so I'm going to close the time for public comment and take it back to the applicant for rebuttal related to the issues that have been presented by the speakers.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just have four notes here and I can walk you through some of the questions that you've asked. Number one, Larry Grissini has written two letters and a council member has alluded to one of the letters that he saw to the, to his neighbor, Mr. Klink, and has not received any response from Mr. Klink on those two letters. Number two is during the MBAR review, when we pulled the project back and redesigned the second-story addition, Mr. Klink nor any of his representatives came to the two public hearings where we presented these ideas and reviewed them and actually never came forward to meet with us or discuss at that public hearing any of the concerns that I raised today. And in fact, the MBAR was prepared to push the project forward sooner, but they realized that maybe they needed to see the story poles for a second time just to be clear in their mind that the project had met their concerns earlier and was pulled back substantially. And they were satisfied and they put the project, moved the project forward and put a favorable light on that issue. In terms of the FAR, we did study that at those two meetings also. There were, we looked at each neighbor guideline which I put forward to you. And within, within the neighboring lots, they range from 53 percent. Anyone beyond that gate goes from 53 to 86, 144, 106. Our original proposal had, the Grissinis are on top at 1775 for null point. They're currently at 22 percent. And with this addition, they moved to 41 percent. When the MBAR looked at that, they saw that they were within the range within that neighborhood. And going out to the site and looking at the story poles, they felt comfortable to move this project forward and that it did fit within the compatibility of the neighborhood. In terms of the privacy, they did make that a request, that they look at that more specifically. When it did come back to them, which I think is the place to do it, certainly the applicant would not be opposed to mocking up those window placements on the roof if need be. And we could look at it more closely with the MBAR and make sure that the privacy issue is really put to bed for everyone. And one last thing about the drawing survey. The gardener's shed was not part of the original proposal. It's become an issue now at this point and that survey has been updated with a survey onsite and it is accurate and deemed accurate by the staff.
Thank you. I'll put it back to staff whether there are any comments on the material that we've received from the applicant and the neighbors before we deliberate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. The, Mr. Mano addressed the FAR study that was passed out. That's something that was introduced to the Montecito Board of Architectural Review, I believe, by the neighbors, the Clinks, at one of the initial meetings and something they took into their consideration through their review process. With regard to the survey and accuracy of the plans for the gardener's cottage, we did request an updated survey and we did receive a stamped and signed survey that shows that structure. And that's what was attached, a copy of that was attached to the memo that I presented to you today. And we have a copy, a full-size set as well. Our recommendation was that that survey, along with the other survey that shows the property line, be incorporated onto a single survey sheet to be sure that we're seeing everything accurate all in one sheet. But we do have two stamped, signed surveys. And with regard to the, to the building permits, they were, Mr. Allen addressed those. But the 1994 permits, just for clarification, were for beach cabana. They didn't include the gardener's cottage. There was a 2003 permit for the gardener's cottage specifically, a building permit that was for remodel and would not have included any structural changes, but was issued over the counter at the building department.
Okay. Mr. Allen, how would you suggest we address or not the issue that we, I mean, within the material we've had presented to us, it's, although it's outside the purview with the plans that are in front of us for approval, we clearly have structural improvements that are taking place on the property without benefit of permits? Because I've seen it myself, I walk out there.
Mr. Chair, you know, what I would suggest is that you ask staff to bring a report back to you about what kind of, about the, whether there are or not zoning violations on the adjacent property. What, if any, action, planning and development proposes with respect to those so that you are kept apprised of developments?
As a separate and distinct.
As a separate and distinct matter.
Right. Okay. That makes sense. Thank you. So that concludes the public hearing on this item. So I'll take it to the Planning Commission. Commissioner Gottstanger?
Yes, and this is not intended to belabor the point with the gardener's cottage, but I'm not, I'm finding it really difficult to understand. In the staff report, we've got, and it may be just because it's legally non-conforming, and that's all I'm asking of staff to clarify for me here, is that in the staff report, under the project information, we have the number of dwelling units, two, existing single-family dwelling and a legally non-conforming gardener's cottage. And project density, two single-family dwellings. Number of parking spaces. So I'm trying to figure out, what is this gardener's cottage? Is it actually a building that somebody is living in and we're saying it's kind of like a second residence, but because it's legally non-conforming, we're not to consider it as a second residence? What is it? Does anybody, I mean, do you understand what I'm asking? You know? I mean, it looks like in part of the staff report, we're actually saying that it's a, that we've got two existing single-family dwellings, one legal and one legally non-conforming. Is that accurate? Is that what we've got there? And so somebody in the coastal zone, according to our zoning ordinance, can have two single-family residences on a single lot in the coastal zone? If one is historic and legally non-conforming, we still can continue to expand in spite of that nobody else gets to do such a thing? What? Well, but it's listed as a single-family dwelling. We're calling it a single-family dwelling. Even though it's non-conforming, it's still a single-family dwelling.
But it's legal, non-conforming.
So that would be to say then, if somebody came in with a building that was like a barn or something and they'd been using it for years and years and years and it had been determined to be legally non-conforming, this could happen throughout Montecito. We could have two, if long as it was legally non-conforming, you could have two single-family residences on one lot. If it's legally non-conforming.
The use can't change.
That's what the legally non-conforming causes.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. One could not have a legally non-conforming structure which, whose use was as a barn, for example.
Okay, that would, maybe that was a bad example.
Convert to a residential use. But if one has two legally non-conforming structures used and permitted as residential structures, you know, going back to 1929, yes, that can exist.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Now, you raised another issue, which was structural alteration and expansion. And that would have to be addressed and that is constrained by Article II.
Okay, good. That, thank you. That actually.
Thank you. So Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Continue here.
Please do.
I'm sure it must be clear the direction I'm going here, so I might as well continue.
I'll do it if nobody else wants to.
Yeah, I, you know, I really find this really difficult to approve this project as it's been submitted. You know, that's why I asked for the FARs. If I look, you know, there's only three buildings in the neighborhood, according to the FAR information that was given to us. Excuse me. Oh, no, that's, that's, that's the part, there's one, two, three, four buildings in the whole neighborhood that exceed significantly what they're asking for. You know, there's only, there's one at 144, 106, 48, which is below, and then there's another 53, you know. And given that this parcel already has a lot going on here, not only is square footage, they actually have the use of a guest house, they actually have a use of a legally non-conforming second residence on this lot. And to, for me, to approve something that is 41 percent over the guidelines, I can't, I can't do that. I can't do that. And I did a little homework and I know it's not in our, I know it's not in our, it's not in the documents we look at and the rules that we have. But if you take all the buildings together, all the buildings together and add them all up, we're looking at a 17 percent FAR here. A 17 percent of all of the buildings in relationship to the lot size. Our, we cap our commercial use at 25 percent, at point 25. This is really pushing the edge of residential use. Most of our residential use, our lot coverage is 3 to 5 percent. So this is like, when you look at it like the total lot square footage in relationship to the lot size and then you look at the FARs per the guidelines we use, this is like, in my estimation, a little over the top. So that's, you know, and I have a concern about continuing to escalate, always ratcheting up, you know. Always ratcheting up. That's what we're doing. So, you know, five years from now, 10 years from now, we're going to, we're going to, somebody's going to come in and say, okay, let's redo those numbers. And we, and per the law, we have to use what's on the ground as the existing setting. So then we're going to raise the bar throughout the community. And I think at some point, at least for me personally, I have to say, no, enough is enough. And, you know, relative to that, that there- And, you know, relative to that, that there's impacts of the neighbors are concerned about their views, you know, I just can't make the findings that this is appropriate for this lot.
Commissioner Gottstanger, I have a question for you, maybe you can help me out on. If I look at page two.
Yes.
And I'll also say that I think for the purposes of looking at this project, I could probably say the neighborhood is the area inside the gate of the colony, or whatever you call it, which is, it starts with the subject property, 1775, but if I look at that, I'm showing, it shows 1775 as 22% over the guidelines.
That's the existing.
That's the existing, but I look at the next one, the Clinks are 53% over. The next one down is 144% over, the next one down is 106 over, then you have one that's down at 30, but then the next one is 48 over, then 26, 25, and 86. Well, that means in the existing, five of the four would still continue to be bigger than the subject property.
Okay, so historically, just let's start there. Historically...
So I mean, and so my point is...
Yeah, I got it.
By increasing this one, we wouldn't be, we're not taking the average up, oh, I guess we're taking the total number up, but the ones that are over whatever the average is here, they don't get up to it even if we approve this addition.
Yeah, well, okay, so...
Or is your comment really related to the other things that don't count within the guidelines?
No, it's considered to be both. That was the, what was, my reason for going with the other numbers was so that I was clear as to what the total impact, given that there were a number of these random other buildings on the parcel already. And so I wanted to really, because I've been interested in looking at that, and in fact, we have had a subcommittee of this commission who's been looking at that, you know, ongoingly, of including all, you know, and we've had projects that we've seen where we've had large accessory buildings and all kinds of things, you know, to get around the FARs in the single building. But I want to go back to your original premise that you made, because that, I think that that's something that needs to be agreed on by the commission, is the neighborhood after the gate? Historically, it has not been. When we have looked at Fernal Point, we have looked at all of the Fernal Point. We have not said, okay, we're only gonna look at this neighborhood over here. All the work that was done to determine that Fernal Point was 30% over the guidelines, even when the guidelines were written, was based on the entire Fernal Point neighborhood, not just from the gate. So if we're now going to look at FARs just in the neighborhood from the gate, I would like to have the agreement of the entire commission that we've now determined that that's the neighborhood we're looking at, because that's not how we've looked at it before. So you made that jump.
Well, yeah, I did, and I'm not sure if I believe my own premise, I just kind of threw it out there as a way to look at it.
Okay. Well, then, let's find out what it is we're dealing with, so that we're all at least on the same page as...
But in your, and so let's address that. And your estimation for an all point is the entire of the community, forget the fact that part of it is not accessible to the public.
Yes, yeah, that's how, well, I mean, I'm just, I said that. Historically, that's how the original numbers were determined, that's how we've looked at other projects, it's in fact how we looked at Mr. Clink's project when it was brought forward, we went through the whole FAR issue then.
Yeah.
He had to match up to the entire neighborhood, not just his little area. Things may have gone completely different for him if we had said, oh, well, Mr. Clink, we're only gonna count from the gate forward. You know, we didn't do that with that applicant.
Yeah, now that you mention it, I remember, we did look at the entire.
We looked at the entire neighborhood. So to give benefit to the neighbor, you know, when we didn't give benefit to Mr. Clink seems, I don't know, that's weird to me. It's not a flat playing field here.
Okay, good. Anyone else?
I'm gonna say one other thing. As far as the addition of the square footage on this project, I could potentially consider some additional square footage on this project, but I really, I find it, and I think it's in one of these, the fact that all of the additional square footage, that's, or most of, let me just put it most of, that's being asked for, is on the second story, except for those little tiny additions, and the fact that although it is behind the string line, it is just barely behind the string line. And I've been, and if you look at the site plans, and you look at the stra, and you look at the string line, I'm concerned, well, wait a second, that string line was put there so that we were protecting properties as they moved along? This second-story addition doesn't protect anything as far as 1787 Fernal Point is concerned, you know, which is considerably back from the string line, and the second-story addition is like right up to the edge. So, I mean, it's like an overall site planning issue for me that, you know, I mean, I think that if the Grissinis want to have a second-story master bedroom suite and a sitting room and a large walk-in closet and a large master bathroom, which is certainly bigger than any of the bathrooms in my house, you know, I think it ought to be set well back. Just well back, not right forward, you know?
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Gottstanger. Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I have less concern about the size of the addition, given that the footprint isn't increased. There are obviously major other houses around. I don't think it visually gives you that sense of, oh, my God, look what's happened here. I still have a problem, in spite of county council reaching for his light, or his microphone to tell me how wrong I am, that that guest house shouldn't be a second residential unit. And for us to just ignore it gives it some credence down the road. Well, the Montecito Planning Commission approved this whole thing and saw that in 2008, and so it gives it some credence. If that is a guest house without a kitchen, you know, that's the non-conforming, how did it become that and why? It's supposed to be on five acres for everyone else in Montecito. It's a valuable thing. Five acres, separate residential.
A second residential unit, but this is declared a second residential unit, it's considered a non-conforming gardener's cottage. The question is, does it have a...
Well, the gardener was living there full-time until he just moved out, so it's, and that creek is so sensitive there, the, I think we need to clean that up, and then, and then maybe, I'm going with Claire and that, maybe a little smaller up there, and it's done.
I understand your point, because I think all of us are a little concerned when we see things that look a little difficult in the code violation or potential code violation. But I don't think we need that in order to make a decision on this project. I think we can look at the plans in front of us and determine what we think is the correct course of action. So I'd love to hear a motion. Okay, I'll make a motion for the denial of this project, and that we have staff prepare, actually, I guess it would be a motion for continuance to bring us back findings for the denial of the project as incompatible with the neighborhood.
Yes, I will second that. I thought you were going another direction. That is, that would have been my motion.
Motion and seconded for continuance of the project to bring back findings for denial of the permits before us. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Aye?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Let's see, how about if we take just a couple-minute break, and then we'll come back and deal with the second item on our agenda, which is the gardener lot split. Oh, of course. Let's see, let's, let me amend that, or supplement that motion, as the case may be, to bring it, bring us back before us in our August meeting, if we could.
August 20th.
Yes.
If, Mr. Chair, if I might add not to the motion, but just as a comment, there are a number of issues that were raised that frankly make it, may not directly bear on the proposal and our ruling on that, but they do go to the nature of the development on the site. And there were, among other things, easement agreements that were referred to that are not in evidence, that would have indicated that there's cooperation between the two landowners in terms of that encroachment. There are a number of things like that that you pick up out of the testimony, that it would help to have staff clarify some of those. I think it would ease the comfort level when we review the project.
Thanks for your comments, Commissioner Overall. We're gonna take a five-minute... We're still gonna, go ahead, Mr. Ward.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
I know you're trying to resolve things, and I'm trying to take a break.
Well, we all so heard, brought up was this question about the zoning violations that relate to the two properties, and maybe that information would come up in the context of a report back, not part of your next hearing on this project.
It would not be part of this project that's before us here. So, again, five-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the lot split, the gardener lot split. Into session for our hearing of June 18th, we're on our standard agenda item number two, which is the gardener lot split at 75 Olive Mill Road. And... Mr. Moore, you want to read this item into the record?
The following is the hearing on the request of Sydney Sawyer, Sawyer Land Use Consulting, agent for the owner Ted Garner, to consider case number 06 TPM, TPM 14697, application filed on April 11th, 2006, and to approve the negative declaration 08 NGD 6 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you. Before we get started, it's 15 minutes to noon. I had thought we would get to the item number three on the transfer development rights before lunch, but I'm planning to take a journalist for a lunch break and come back, so that item will probably be, let's say, 1 o'clock for anyone that wants to address us on that item. And with that, Ms. Harris, we're ready for your presentation.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'm here to present a brief presentation about the proposed lot split, the Garner lot split. And just to jump right in, it is, the request is to subdivide one lot into two with 7R2 zoning, that is for two-family residential development or duplex kind of development with a 7,000-square-foot minimum lot size. The proposed lots would be a little over 7,000 square feet and almost 14,000 square feet. The parcel is located on Olive Mill Road on the west side, just south and adjacent to Highway 101. It's outlined in white here. And there is an existing single-family dwelling on the property, and there's also a number of coast live oak trees. And this is a diagram of the proposed lot split, and it is proposed, as you can see, the larger of the two lots would be in the front portion, and the existing single-family dwelling would remain on that lot. Proposed parcel one would be in the rear portion and is the smaller of the two lots. There is a proposed access driveway and utility easement that would be across the southern portion of proposed parcel two to access lot one, which would be an interior lot. There is also an addition that's used for storage in addition to the single-family dwelling that would end up straddling the proposed lot line, and so as a part of this project, that addition would be demolished. And with regards to some of the potential issues with future development with this particular lot, drainage, if you, it's probably hard to see on the overhead, but on the exhibits that you got, the drainage to the property naturally drains from the northeast to the south-southwest corner. And this parcel was developed in all likelihood long before the others were, the existing house was built in the '30s, and the other, the adjacent development would have come later. So the existing drainage goes across those other lots, so the future development of lot one in particular would need to take the drainage into concern during their development. And because one thing that is, was made very clear by flood control is no drainage could be directed to Highway 101, and so the project has been conditioned that they will need to look at the drainage situation and provide appropriate drainage that would meet flood control standards, so that you're not impact, you don't have any potential to impact the neighbors who are to the south and the west. Oak tree protection, there are several specimen oak trees on the site, they're likely remnants of a larger number of oaks that were present back when this property was created as part of the Montecito oak subdivision. Tree protection plans would be required during any future development or demolition work. The oak trees are kind of highlighted in green on this diagram, and there's in particular a large oak tree, 36-inch diameter oak tree, that's located very close to the addition that would be demolished, so that's why we have the tree protection plan requirement in place. Regarding noise, the freeway is located to the north, and of course, there would be impacts to any future residents to, that could be exposed to freeway noise. There was a sound study that was done, and the recommendations of that sound study would, are part of the conditions of approval to mitigate the sound by constructing a sound wall along the northern property boundary and the short western property boundary, and that could be six to 10, six to eight feet in height is what is recommended. And also, the project would be conditioned such that any construction of the sound wall would be properly landscaped as seen from the public viewing side or the freeway side of the property. And finally, there is a question about right-of-way, which I know earlier this morning you had a briefing on the new policies that adopted by Public Works with regard to road encroachment permits and the policies that they will be looking at when they grant them. The shown in pink is the property boundary, the existing property boundary by Olive Mill, and highlighted in yellow, which is not showing up very well on this screen, but let me point it out to you. It's coming right about here. That yellow highlight is the location of an existing picket fence, it's only a couple feet high. And a road encroachment permit would be required for that fence to remain in that location from Public Works. And the project has been conditioned to investigate with Public Works whether it needs the road encroachment permit and to get the road encroachment before recordation of the map, and if they would not grant it, then they would need to remove it. But it is important to note that the new policies Public Works has in place are to ensure that there is adequate access in the public right-of-way for pedestrians and bicyclists. And there actually is an existing sidewalk in front of this house, and that sidewalk is between the fence and the curb of Olive Mill Road, so there is a public access that is already available. A negative declaration was prepared for the proposed split and circulated for the public review period. There were no major issues raised in the public comment period that would... There were no major issues raised in the public comment period that would necessitate a change in the environmental document, so the proposed final ND is the same as that which was circulated for comment. As discussed in section 6.2 of the staff report, the project can be found consistent with the policies of the Montecito Community Plan and the Coastal Plan. Of particular interest is the water use question, which I know, uh, the Montecito Water District was in front of your commission today, and, and we have consulted with Tom Mosby regarding this proposed lot split, and there are no issues with that. They can serve this, this proposed split. In addition, the Montecito Growth Management ordinance does apply, and as required in that ordinance, your commission can assign the points to the property to be used in the future allocations. Because this is a duplex, or could potentially be duplexes, essentially the point assignments would be, would go for each unit. So, for example, on the vacant lot, lot one, if the applicant came in and proposed to build a duplex, they would need to get two allocations, one for each of the residential units. Whereas if they just proposed to do a single-family dwelling, they, they would only need to get one allocation. And for the existing lot, if they wanted to redevelop with a new single-family dwelling, there'd be no allocation, but if they wanted to convert it to a duplex, they would need one because it's adding, it would be adding one unit. So, today, staff's recommendation is that you adopt the point allocation of 75 points. That's discussed in more detail in the staff report. And finally, since the staff report was docketed, staff noted a typographic error with condition number 33, which was referencing some fees that actually don't apply in Montecito, so we're just removing the reference to those fees, library, public administration, and sheriff. There are other fees that apply, parks, transportation, which are still part of that condition and would still remain. And in addition, staff proposed a new condition for which we, we circulated a draft of that language for you this morning, and that would provide timing for the condition for removal of that house addition that's proposed, that would currently straddle the proposed lot line. And the timing for that condition would be to remove, remove that addition prior to recordation so that we would not be creating new parcels with, in essence, a zoning violation by having a, a structure across the parcel boundary. In addition, by timing the condition this way, we ensure that the accessway is opened up to be, and available to be developed for future access to the new lot. And that, I guess with that, that leads to my recommendation to adopt the findings as proposed, as drafted in attachment A, and approve the negative declaration in attachment B of your staff reports. Adopt the allocation of 75 points for each residential unit under the Montecito Growth Management Ordinance, and approve the lot split subject to the conditions of approval in ta, in attachment C, but as, with the modifications recommended in the hearing today, to add the condition regarding timing of demolition and to modify condition number 33. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Commissioners, site visits and on this particular item. Commissioner Gottstanger, I'll start with you.
Drive-by.
Drive-by, okay. Commissioner Overall.
Same, drive-by.
Commissioner Burrows, Phillips. Yeah, it's very visible site, we're all familiar, and I, I didn't have any contact with the applicant. So, does the applicant wish to make a presentation to us on this item? Please do.
Good afternoon, Chair Beerig and members of the Montecito Planning Commission. My name is Cindy Souter, and I'm the agent for the Garner family who own the property at 75 Olive Mill Road. I've reviewed the staff report and the conditions of approval, and I agree with staff's recommendation for approval of the project. I do have one suggested change for the new condition that she just brought to you today regarding the timing of the demolition of the existing storage that will straddle the property line. The Garner family would like to retain that storage for as long as possible, so I've come up with two alternatives for your commission to ponder, if you like. One would be to change the timing of the demolition of the storage to upon construction on parcel one, because it's blocking the access, so logically, you would have to remove that to get there to do anything. Another option could to, would be to change the timing to prior to transfer of that back lot, the parcel one. And then that would also result in an amendment to condition of approval number 20, which is about the covenant to easement, since, you know, you can't have even easement to yourself because they would be, have common ownership. A term in condition 20 to add a caveat that the easement area would be unobstructed, unobstructed upon conveyance of parcel one. So, and that's my only request, otherwise I agree with staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Questions of the applicant commissioners? Mr. Allen, can we do that?
We generally require map conditions to be implemented at time of recordation of the map.
I would be, I would be concerned about either one of those. We don't have any control other, over whether they happen or not, so I don't think I could support that. We do have a letter in front of us with some concerns about parking and related to renting rooms, but I don't think that's within the purview of, of the, the matter we have before us. But I will make a note of it, that it is an issue apparently for the neighbor, but again, that's not part of what we have in front of us here today. Commissioner Overall.
I just had one question for Ms. Harris. Fortunately, I either can't read or don't know where to look, for the, the distance from the northern property line and the proposed sound wall to the freeway. And what my concern is, is in all probability, in the not-too-distant future, we're going to have some effort to widen Highway 101, and whether or not that potential widening was taken into account in either the, the placement or, or size of the sound wall and the resulting noise impacts.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Overall, at this time, we don't have enough information from Caltrans about just how much work they would be doing in this area, this particular phase of their development, is the farther one along in the future. The proposed sound wall is essentially proposed at the property boundary, although they would all, they would be required to have landscaping to screen it on their property, not on the Caltrans right-of-way. So there would, at, at that point, at least when they actually came in to design a sound wall, they would need to be considering that, and there would need to be some offset. At such time that that would be, could be proposed, we could look in further with SB CAG or with Caltrans in determining where they are in their plans along, in the corridor, but, but we did look at that as we were preparing the ND, and we didn't have any new information that, that could help us at this time.
Ms. Harris, if I could, that raises an interesting point for me. I, I seem to remember seeing some consideration before that Caltrans may have to do some taking of additional right-of-way for the ultimate design of the, taking the freeway to six lanes. Do you have any knowledge on that point? And the reason it comes up for me is because this, this lot we're potentially approving here is only 100 feet larger than our minimum lot size, so if there was any, any chance that that would end up going below that lot size, if there was any kind of design studies that showed that they were, were going to take additional right-of-way on the improvements of the freeway, do you have any knowledge on that?
Mr. Chair, I, I do not have any knowledge or information on that. If this lot was approved and if it was recorded, and if at some point in the future Caltrans were to take some additional land for right-of-way, it would just become a non-conforming lot at that point.
But there's no design studies at this point that would show us that this is going to be taken into a non-conforming status?
There, there are not any that I was aware of, and we did circulate the negative declaration to Caltrans and didn't receive any comments on that.
No comments, okay, good. Thank you very much. Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you. I see that you have a, you're proposing a tree protection plan. Could you please tell me when that goes into effect and how long it's in effect?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Burrows, the tree protection plans would be required when they do any demolition work or, for new construction, and so that would be when they actually come in and, and apply for a coastal development permit to do demolition or construction. They would be required at that time to prepare the tree protection plan and show how they were going to, in compliance with the conditions, actually propose to protect the oak trees that are on the site.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gottstanger.
Yes, Ms. Harris, can you tell me on this, on parcel one, because it's interior lot, does, does it then still have a front yard setback of 25 feet, or does it 10, 10 feet all the way around? Because it doesn't really have a front yard because it's in the interior, so I was just curious, I have forgotten how setbacks work for interior lots.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gottstanger, it would be an interior lot unless it would be the, the 10-foot setback all around.
All the way around, okay, thank you. What?
Let's see, public testimony.
Yeah, that's what I was checking.
I don't, we don't have any speaker slips, but I will comment that if there's anyone here that wishes to address us on this item, please do. Mr. Palladini.
This may seem to be an insignificant thing, but to, in fair to all parties involved, in way of disclosure too, this, this property has been a bit controversial at, in the community and at the association in that, over the last few years, there've been a number of letters written and a number of comments in, in person in public comment at our meetings about the use of the back part of this property as recreation for the children and the family and their friends. And I have, you know, I had three sons and they were all skateboard nuts, and, so I understand the issues. But the fact is, is that there has been issues related to good relationships with the neighbors, good neighbor policies about the use of what is now lot number one, or property number one. So, I would like to ask if it's appropriate if the status of that back property is going to remain the same until such time as development occurs, which could be a long time, and also ask perhaps if those issues were resolved with the neighbors or what the current status is with the neighbors, if that's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions of that, on that subject? Thank you.
Not seeing anyone else that wishes to address us on this item. I'm going to close the, the public comment, public testimony portion of our hearing here today and bring it back. Staff have any comments on any, any of the staff's presentation or the comments from Mr. Palladini of the Montecito Association?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, some of the controversy was brought to our attention, and there was a, there was a zoning violation reported or, and, and an investigation that was made to, by PND regarding a skateboard ramp in the backyard, what is currently a backyard and being used as a backyard. And the PND investigated that and determined that it did not meet the criteria of requiring a permit, and thus there wa, and there was no permit necessary, and thus there was no zoning violation. And so, that was the determination by the department. With the, if the lot split is approved and recorded, it can continue to be used as a backyard at some time if they were to sell the property separately from the property with the house, at that time it would be under a separate ownership and, and the primary use would need to be established at that time.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions of, of staff at this point, or the applicant?
Yeah, I actually, I actually have a question for the applicant.
Please.
Why are we doing this? I mean, it's like, I just don't get it. You've got a pretty okay lot, you know, obviously, the applicant has a large family and lots of visitors and lots of social events, and I get that they can continue to use it, but I just don't get why you would want to take, you know, a pretty nice lot with a pretty nice house on it and give up your entire, you know, pretty much you've got nothing left to use, you know? I mean, well, you've got your side yards of your existing house and things, but I, I just don't get it. So, I mean, and it doesn't have anything to do with the decision that I'm going to make based on land use policy. I'm just kind of curious as to why somebody would do this and what your intentions are.
Chair Beerig and Commissioner Gottstanger, the reason they are doing this lot split is for estate planning purposes for in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Would you entertain a motion?
Let me close the public hearing, not seeing any more questions of staff, so it's back to the commissioners for deliberation or motion.
I would make a motion, we accept staff recommendation, including the revision to condition number 33.
And I think there was revision to, there were two revisions, weren't there?
No, that was the applicant.
We have a new condition 16, as well as the revision.
Whatever it says.
Mr. Chair, it, it would be to revise condition 33 as written, as shown in your staff report, and then to add a new condition 16, which, which we discussed, which would then renumber all the rest of the conditions.
Right, okay. And so, that's what your motion, that's the motion. Thank you.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Aye. Passes unanimously. So, it's 10 minutes past the hour approximately. Let's come back at, at 10 past 1:00 for our item number three on the transfer development rights. Mr. Ward?
Just one thing while we're doing the, the lunch break, per your previous direction regarding a potential follow-up hearing for the Miramar, we talked about different dates, and I'll be confirming with the applicant. And what I understood is that because of other obligations, it looked like the, the July 24th would not work for Mr. Phillips, and the 28th and 29th were problematic as well, so it looked like July 30th or 31st, which would be a Wednesday or Thursday of the last week in July. But I also checked, and actually, July 22nd, which is typically a Tuesday board hearing, they're in recess, meaning that it'd be tele, the television access would be available. So actually, we have July 22nd, 30th, or 31st.
Which split day of the week is the 22nd?
It's a Tuesday. It's a typical board day, but they're in recess, so that might be a good opportunity. This room. But just to have the, we wanted to ensure that we had televised. So I will proceed with checking with the applicant for confirmation of the dates of the 22nd, 30th, and 31st.
For the record, I would prefer either the 30th or the 31st.
I would as well, but I can make the 22nd work. It's, I will be coming back the evening before from my vacation, so, but if that's the one that works, I can make that work.
Thank you.
Okay? Good.
Yeah, well, I think, Mr. Phillips, you still need to check your calendar, is that accurate?
I'm good, I, I knew that, I know the dates.
Any of those dates? Okay.
Good. So, it's, we're, we're still open, because we're checking with the applicant to see what their schedules look like, I believe, so we've left those three dates open.
Yeah, and we'll report back before we close today.
Okay, good.
Well, Mr. Chair, I, I hadn't heard that we were confirming that, I mean, you still have the 16th all day, you, you made a request that we would continue into the evening if necessary, and we would do that, and I, and we'll notify that with the applicant too. It sounds like we wanted the follow-up as a possible date if you needed it for your deliberations.
Exactly. This is, this is not a date certain, this is a, this is anticipating a, a possible requirement. Thank you. So, we're adjourned until 1:15, or, excuse me, 1:10. 110. Which is the Santa Barbara Ranch TDR ordinance related to the Naples community. And this is not a hearing. This will be a, a report, I believe. Is that correct? We, oh, it is a hearing. Okay. So if you would, please read this item into the record. Thank you.
The Montecito Planning Commission will receive a report on a draft ordinance establishing a policy and procedural framework for transferring development rights and make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors in association with the Naples Town Site.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Fig, we're, we're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here, first occasion to meet up with you. I'm not certain how many of you have been following the, the trials and tribulations of the Naples Project. And I thought that I might start with a little bit of orientation because that's the springboard for TDR. This little graphic is kind of, it dummies down to the most basic terms of what a transfer of development rights is about. And it's a matter of taking from what we call sender sites. Those are the areas that we want to reduce development, either by transferring them to other areas or by buying out the development rights altogether. Using what we call a TDR authority, some refer to it as a bank, as kind of an intermediary in the process, that entity to be designated would acquire and sell development credits. And ideally, those credits would be transferred to what we call receiver sites, which is really the, the heart and soul of what we're going to be talking about in the ordinance and the possible involvement of the Montecito area in that transaction. So this is a, just an overview graphic. But it all, like I indicate, springboards from the Naples Town Site, about two miles north up coast of Galida. And again, for those that may not be familiar with the history, we are on the throes right now of evaluating several development alternatives for that area. And it really is the result of the fact that there is recognized 274 legal lots in that area, resulting from an antiquated subdivision back in the late 1800s. But there are 274 legal lots that are recognized in a 800-acre area of the Naples Coast. So obviously, there's a great deal of interest in reducing the amount of potential development that occur there. And TDR is looked at as one possible means to accomplish that. This is a graphic that kind of puts into context, again, the importance of TDR, at least as it relates to Naples, in that the graphic in the upper right-hand corner indicate the development potential in a schematic way of what the current land use designations provide for under agriculture. Some 14 lots out of the 1800 acres, excuse me, 800 acres could be developed under those current land use designations. The graphic below it reflects what we believe to be the development potential of the legal lots that exist. Not all of the legal lots that I mentioned are, are equal in size, configuration, location, and they have their own physical constraints. And our assessment is about 125 of those lots are in fact buildable. So you can see the disconnect between the county's desire and its density for Naples versus what the legal lots could otherwise provide for. So we get back to this little graphic I already described with the idea of a sender site, this being Naples, transferring development rights to urban areas. And as we'll get into this ordinance you're about to review, specifically targeting those receiver sites to be within urban areas of the unincorporated county. Just to, again, give you a little bit of a history, we've had quite a lengthy dialogue and set of proceedings that have led to this point in time. It started back in the early part of 2006 when a study was commissioned and released for public review that evaluated the feasibility of doing development transfers from Naples. And ultimately, that study concluded that while it may be possible to extinguish some development rights, the values for the potential entitlements at Naples are so high that it's very unlikely that you can acquire enough development rights off-site or to raise capital from other sources to extinguish all of the development at Naples. But the mere fact that there's the potential for some of that to be transferred is the reason why we've embarked into the ordinance phase. And so over a course of about a year and a half, county staff in conjunction with a number of the, what I call stakeholders, that would be the Naples Coalition, the Environmental Defense Center, and other interested parties, not the least of which are the owners' representatives at Naples, convened a series of working sessions to walk through the mechanics of TDR, the feasibility analysis, and ultimately arrived at a draft TDR ordinance. That ordinance has since moved forward. Several proceedings in front of the Planning Commission, most recently June 5th, when the countywide Planning Commission did take preliminary action on the ordinance you're looking at. We have a, a follow-up session at the end of July to do some cleanup and to incorporate some of their recommendations, but they specifically wanted to hear what you had to say before they wrapped up their deliberations. So what we're doing here today is to take a, a look at the document that's in your packet. And there are an assortment of Planning Commission, County Planning Commission recommendations that we need to square up with that ordinance and get your feedback on what your thoughts might be. But the, at the end of the day, our intent is to move forward to the Board of Supervisors, seeking their approval and adoption of the ordinance. And this, as I indicate, provides the mechanism, the tool, to allow TDR to go forward, no matter how many or how few lots that might be accomplished in this process, we think it's important that we have some tool available to us. So what I'd like to do is just highlight what I think are the key features of the ordinance. First, starting in just the basic override, overarching purposes and principles of the ordinance. First and foremost, this ordinance is specific to Naples. It isn't, it isn't a countywide ordinance that could be applied to areas in North County, for instance, to preserve whatever habitat values may be of importance in that neck of the woods. It had been discussed to create a TDR ordinance that might have that kind of universal application, but the Board wanted us to be very specific to Naples because that's our most immediate priority. Doesn't mean that we might be able to morph this ordinance into something broader and, and can be applied to other circumstances, but our, our initial focus is just Naples. A very important overarching premise of the program is that it's voluntary and that it's market-driven. That means that the, the sender site owners cannot be forced to sell their, their rights. They are certainly a part of the negotiation process, but they are not obligated to sell their rights. And receiver sites can choose not to proceed to get their entitlements if they find that the cost of acquiring their credits are extorbanate, that, that would undermine the economics of their project. So the concept here is that it's not a cram-down, it is a voluntary program. And then it also allows, along the way, for the Board of Supervisors to establish what they consider to be the most important areas of Naples that they want to see preserved. And that has great ramifications on how many development rights might be extinguished. For instance, if the priority of the county is set by the Board is to extinguish development on bluff lots, it's going to take a lot more capital to extinguish the, the values because they're much higher. Then, for instance, if the desire is simply to remove as many lots as possible from Naples, reduce the overall density, you can acquire a lot more lots when they're on the north side of the highway and those that don't have ocean views. So setting priorities has a big part of the, plays a big role in this overall process and how many development credits might be extinguished. The applicability, as I already mentioned, is, is very explicit to Naples. And it also limits the receiver sites to the South Coast. This was another area of great debate in our, our adventure here. Some have advocated for a countywide approach that would allow receiver sites to occur anywhere in the unincorporated county. But ultimately, we gravitated to the South Coast. And, and it's really a two-fold kind of rationale. Number one, that there's this geographic continuity. But perhaps even more important is that there's an economic symbiotic relationship. The, the values on the South Coast are much higher than they are in the North Coast. So the amount of, of density that needs to be created is less on the South Coast than it would be in the North Coast, simply because there's, there'd have to be more units created in the North Coast to achieve the equivalent value. So ultimately, that's how this ordinance shook out, that the, the South Coast would be the area of receiver sites. Important definitions, what is a development right? And what it really is, is it encompasses the principal permitted uses of property. And it's those rights that would be extinguished in the process. And what that means at the end of the day is that it, that property doesn't just lie fallow, but there are other uses that can be made of that land once it's been stripped of its principal permitted uses. Open space grazing crop production, for, for instance. Not necessarily the highest and best use of those parcels, but at least there is some potential economic return that can be made of them. Program administration, it's natural that the Department of Planning and Development take a leadership role. They will be processing requests for receiver sites and passing judgment through the Planning Commission and the Board on those sites that are best suited to receive additional density. The ordinance makes explicit that the way it's written is expressly limited to the unincorporated areas of the county. And what that does is it leaves open the opportunity for incorporated areas like City of Santa Barbara, City of Galida, Carpinteria, who wish to join, can through a interjurisdictional agreement, craft their own rules as to their participation in the program. That doesn't mean that they could designate sites beyond Naples, but it might give them the ability to designate what areas of Naples that they'd like to see extinguished with the funds that they generate. So the ordinance, as it's crafted, relates only to the unincorporated areas, and we leave open the ability to refine it as it pertains to each jurisdiction that may want to come forward. As I indicated, one of the key parts of the ordinance is to set priorities. And this graphic kind of gives you a sense of what I've already indicated, that the further you move inland of the ocean, the lower the values are on a lot-by-lot basis. So all the red dots denote the highest valued lots, all of those being on the bluff with one exception on the north side of the highway where there's a very large lot involved. Those lots average between $2 and $10 million apiece with their entitlement values. And then, as I say, as you move further inland, those values drop down to about an average of $700,000. And part of the process is that when a, a development credit is acquired at Naples, there's a concurrent requirement that there be an extinguishment, either by the recording of an easement on the property or some other mechanism that precludes any further development that could occur. The ordinance, getting now into what the, the mechanics are that I would imagine would be of, of great interest to you, are the, the criterion, the thresholds that go in determining what receiver sites have the greatest potential and might be able to accommodate a higher density when, than what their current underlying zoning would provide. And the ordinance prescribes a, a two-step process, what I call a pre-screen, which is to give a property owner early on indication whether or not they have a viable candidate, or it's not worth the time and effort to proceed to the formal application process. And that's a pre-screen that would be conducted at the Planning Commission level. If it's a site in the Montecito planning area, it would come to this body. If it's an area outside, it would go to the countywide Planning Commission. Ultimately, the actions of this body and that of the, the County Planning Commission are appealable to the Board, not unlike any other land use matter that you may be involved in. But any event, the, after the pre-screen has been performed and the applicant gets a sense of, of whether or not they, they have a viable candidate, then they would move forward through the formal process that would normally apply to the development of any given parcel. And that would be at a minimum, a development plan and other assortment entitlements, depending on how that property is currently zoned. This is the map of the South Coast that I indicated is the area where receiver sites would be limited. And one of the, the facets of the program, and again, received a great deal of discussion, has to do with a captive zoning market. The premise of the ordinance was based on the idea that any property owner that wished to seek an upzoning that would allow for a higher number of residential units than the current underlying zoning would allow, if they received such a rezone approval, they would have to acquire development credits for the difference. And that creates this captive market so that you don't have a, an alternative to a receiver site owner that would choose to bypass a density transfer program and go direct to a rezone. The idea of a captive market is that anybody that participates in a rezone that receives higher density would have to acquire those rights. Now, I hi, this, highlight this item in yellow because the Planning Commission, in the end, the County Planning Commission disagreed with that approach and are recommending to the Board, and certainly seeks out your thoughts on the matter, that it not be a, a captive market, that rather than having a requirement for zoning participation, that a density bonus program be introduced instead. And the Commission's belief is that that's more in keeping with the voluntary concepts of the program. And it would serve as an inducement for people to go through a density bonus approach through a more expedited processing approach than to require all rezoning applicants to, to buy into the program. So it's an, it's an, it's an important concept and one that received a good deal of attention at the County Planning Commission. Another facet of the ordinance is the idea of an amenity fund. The concept here is to induce, to, to serve as an incentive, to reward those neighborhoods that are willing to accept higher density in their area. And the idea would be for the value of the development credits that are created, 10% of that value would be earmarked for neighborhood improvement projects. And the County Planning Commission believed it would be appropriate that the determination of what those projects would be, would be something embodied in the entitlement process. So as an applicant's request for a density bonus comes forward, so would the request for the use of these amenity funds to build neighborhood amenities. The Development Rights Authority is a, is the intermediary that serves as the institution, if you will. I stay, I try to stay away from the term "bank" because it conjures up more institutional concepts which don't really apply here. This is not the idea of having a lending institution that we're creating, but rather, it serves as a, an intermediary in the transaction process. They negotiate through the appraisals that are achieved, acquiring development rights from Naples, and then negotiating out the value of credits for receiver sites, how much those receiver site owners are going to have to pay. So this intermediary serves as a, as a negotiating arm of this program and as a way in which to attract capital to the program. It's certainly the hope that aside from development density that's created and the value that's achieved and the monies that flow back to the bank, in addition to that mechanism, it's hoped that there'll be capital raised through funds that are, that obtained at the state level, grants, certainly philanthropic contributions. So there's other ways to raise money for the authority than just simply passing judgment on density increases and having owners pay for that privilege. I think one of the interesting facets of this process has been the varied opinions that have weighed in on how best to structure the authority's responsibilities and how it discharges its duties. We initially started with a very definitive process that laid down the, the details of hiring MAI-certified appraisers and, and what they would look at in the, in the course of appraising the value both of sender sites and receiver sites. But we kind of came full circle and determined that it was best to keep this a somewhat loose framework, not knowing who the TDR authority might be. It could be a public land trust, it could be some other entity who has a different way about going in this process. And we wouldn't, wouldn't want to handcuff them in carrying out a mission that they're familiar with that this ordinance inadvertently frustrated. So we defer to the adoption of guidelines, operating parameters that the Board would negotiate with the authority on how they would go about in the transactions, how they would negotiate. would negotiate with the sender and receiver site owners. And as I mentioned before, the interjurisdictional agreements provide for the potential of participation by incorporated entities. In this case, we have heard from both the City of Galita and City of Santa Barbara. Both have expressed interest in this program. We are scheduled to make a presentation to the city council in Santa Barbara in the latter part of July. So it's our hope that when this program becomes active, that we will have other partners that will want to join with the county. There's a final section in the ordinance. The intent is merely to make clear that the Transfer Development Right Authority, the entity that serves as this bank intermediary, is a separate entity all apart from the county. Because there are concerns over potential liabilities and that we want to make certain that the county's corporate shield isn't pierced in the course of these transactions. So there is some language in the end of the ordinance that speaks to what the county's going to expect to see once it negotiates an agreement with the TDR authority, to make certain that the county has insulation from liability. Now, what I'd like to walk through with you are some of the issues, and I believe they're highlighted in your staff report, of what the planning commission grabbled with and what their recommendations are, and certainly, we invite you to weigh in on these issues as well. Geographic applicability, there was some discussion of maybe broadening the program to include areas outside of the urban-rural limit line on the south coast, simply to allow a larger potential pool of candidates. In the end, the planning commission was uncomfortable with that prospect, and the ordinance that they're recommending, limit receiver sites to only urban areas within the unincorporated areas of the county. As we talk about the setting of priorities, as I indicate, depending on what's considered of importance to the county in the extinguishment of development rights at Naples, translates to how much it's going to cost and how many lots can be acquired. And the ordinance had envisioned that that would be a policy set by the Board at the time that they adopt their ordinance. However, the planning commission felt that it may be something that will move over time and that we ought to keep our options open, and depending on how much money ultimately is raised, we may choose to take advantage of lots that are available at the time. In other words, if the desire was to extinguish development rights on Naples bluff-top lots, it may take a long time to raise enough capital to extinguish one lot. On the other hand, if the bank is successful in raising $6, $7 million in capital, it may be prudent at that time to take advantage of that capital and extinguish 10 lots that are inland of Highway 101. So the planning commission is recommending that the establishment of priorities not be something fixed in stone at the onset, but rather to allow that to evolve over time. Also, as a part of the discussion of setting priorities, there was a discussion of whether or not the county should be absolute in establishing the priorities and requiring all donors and requiring all interjurisdictional entities to abide by those priorities, or, in what the planning commission is recommending, is to provide those donors the opportunity to designate where they want their monies to flow. It would be an incentive for them that, in the event that the county may have one set of ideas of what they think are important, this would allow donors that may have a different idea to designate where they want their money to be spent in the extinguishment of development rights. And that is what the planning commission is recommending. We talked a bit about making a distinction between the normal process and an expedited process, again, to incentivize property owners to come forward to make their land available as a receiver site. We don't have real definitive standards as to what an expedited review may be, but we've done our best and will entertain additional language if you so choose. The best we can do is offer intent. And our intent would be that those owners that wish to participate in a TDR program and to seek out your approvals on their land as a receiver, we would do our best to get it to you as quickly as possible. I'm not sure that we're going to be able to go much beyond that, sending exact timelines. We've already talked about the idea of upzoning, and this was probably the centermost part of the planning commission's discussion, their belief that we should not have a captive zoning market, but rather, we should incentivize people to come forward through a density bonus approach. And again, we welcome your thoughts on that as well. Amenity funds, I think I already mentioned this, their recommendation is the planning commission have the ability to pass judgment not only on the receiver sites, but where amenity funds get spent and how they're spent. And then, TDR processing, there is a desire to provide a little bit more direction in the ordinance as to the mechanics of the appraisal process, recognizing that we don't want to handcuff ourselves in when we select a TDR authority. We want to give them some opportunity to interject their thoughts on process. But there was a general sense that we need to be a little bit more definitive in how we go about valuing entitlement rights. And then, finally, administrative options. There's two basic kind of schools of thought. One is a passive approach where the county merely makes this ordinance available for those that wish to use it. That would be a passive, kind of a arms-distance, hands-off approach. The other school of thought is that the county should champion the concept of TDR and, to the extent of committing staff and contributing funds to the effort. Planning commission is kind of in-between. They recognize the importance to promote this concept, but they also recognize the budget constraints of the county. And so it's a situation of try to make the most of it as you can, recognizing that there are other competing priorities for limited county funds. So what you have in your packet are a set of findings, and the planning commission was in agreement with those. And then you have, as I indicate, a host of planning commission thoughts to further refine the ordinance. And we certainly welcome any feedback you'd like to offer. I want to close by noting that the ordinance that's in your package, again, is relative to the unincorporated areas of the county, not including Montecito. So a big part of your role here is providing a recommendation as how this program might apply to the Montecito area. And if, in fact, there is a general consensus on the ordinance and its usefulness, then we would make similar modifications to the Montecito code as we would be making to the countywide code. So with that, I'll conclude and entertain any questions you might have.
Mr. Fig, could you walk us through how a donor, excuse me, know who the donor, how the receiver site, let's assume we have a site in Montecito. What I didn't get from the material is, what's the criteria for an acceptable receiver site?
Okay, Mr. Chair, in your ordinance, there is a set of basic criteria, and they actually are filters to say that they're not eligible.
Right.
And beyond that, it really comes down to the planning commission.
So then, everything is eligible if it doesn't fall outside those.
And ultimately, it's your call as to whether it's not only a suitable site, but the density being requested is appropriate, given its location.
So walk me through how that would apply. Somebody comes in, let's say he has, in this case, a single-family lot, and he wants to subdivide it. It wouldn't be allowed. Could this be allowed? Could he become a receiver site by saying, you know, "I'm going to obtain one of these credits"?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The applicant would come forward, staff would do initial, you know, looksee, the criteria that would knock out the site altogether if they failed to meet that first test. And if they meet that test, then the item would be agendized for the planning commission consideration. The applicant would need to submit a very rudimentary plan that would indicate what they're looking for and how it might fit on the property. And it would be that point that you would conduct a hearing. All the owners, as in a normal entitlement case, adjacent owners would be notified of the hearing. And then you would begin to weigh in on these questions of site location, context of adjacent properties, the amount of density that's being requested. All those come into play in your analysis. Staff would be helping you in formulating an opinion and giving you their professional judgment as to whether or not the site is suitable and the number of units that might be appropriate to it. But ultimately, it would be a decision that the planning commission would make.
Commissioner Burrows.
I have a couple of questions. If the decision should be made to make this applicable to the Montecito planning area, it would still be on a case-by-case on whether or not it applied?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, absolutely correct.
All right, I have another question. How is the TDR authority funded? Could you please review that for me?
Sure, Mr. Commissioner and Chairman and Commissioner, I'm sorry, I don't know your names yet. There are two ways. One is, the easier way is to raise capital through contributions from donors. Say, could be a grant program at the state level, could be even a bond measure, whether one is able to be arranged now or in the future. It could be philanthropic contributions from individuals. Those would be monies that would come to the bank, and usually, I would expect that those monies would be earmarked, that the donors would expect something in return, for instance, limiting the use of their monies to just bluff-top lots or limiting the money to view shed areas, however they wish to have their monies used in the extinguishment of development at Naples. That's the easier of the two. The more challenging is the idea of identifying receiver sites, and we'll use the example that the Chair had indicated. And if the commission determined that one additional unit above the baseline density was appropriate to that site, that owner would have to pay the value for that entitlement, that additional unit, and based on appraisals that would be conducted by the TDR authority. And that owner, then, before they could build that unit, would have to pay that sum to the TDR authority. And then the authority would use that money to negotiate the purchase of development rights at Naples.
And the authority would be self-administrating, self-managing?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioner. And that's been a kind of another area of discussion. It's been our recommendation, and the planning commission, I think, is in agreement, to enlist a non-governmental organization to serve as the authority, not the county as a, you know, a separate entity within the family of the county, but an outside entity such as a public lands trust.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Should the program develop, is there a stay in place for the owners of Naples to not develop while there's a chance to get this going? Or is it a race to see who can get a house up before whatever?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, I'll answer it first by giving a little bit of an explanation. One of the reasons you have a TDR authority as the intermediary is the recognition that receiver sites and sender sites are on different timelines relative to the entitlement process. And so it's conceivable that receiver sites could be identified earlier on, and money can flow to the TDR authority before the sender site is in a position to develop their property. So you don't necessarily have a sender and a receiver that are negotiating directly with one another because they're on different timelines. That's why you have an intermediary. Now, your question is, okay, let's focus on the sender site. Are they obligated to stay development until there's an opportunity for the program to develop legs? The answer is no.
I am sure you have done studies and have concluded that the south coast, as a rule, would prefer the open land beauty of the Gaviota coast. You asked them whether it would matter if we only extinguished half of the density, in that it's perhaps, well, it's ruined now, who cares? 50% less homes may not matter. You know what I mean?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, a very provocative question I don't have an answer for. I think there are some that would believe that extinguishing one bluff-top lot is worth the effort. Others would say, as you indicate, if we can't remove all the lots from public view along Highway 101, what's the sense? So there is no answer to that question. It's, everyone has their own threshold.
Help me out on this. The appraisal process works both ways, as I understand it.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
For both the receiver and the sender site.
Yes.
So the idea is, the receiver sites generate this appraisal, and it says 18% to 20% of the value of the finished residence is the concept for the appraisal process, if I understood it.
Mr. Chair, that's a rough estimate, yes.
That's not set in stone yet.
That's correct.
Okay. But let's assume it's going to be something like that. Let's just throw out 20%. So we have a small lot in Montecito that might have a selling price of $2 million, so the price of this particular, in this case, that somebody would pay $400,000 into the bank, which would then be available for the acquisition of this.
That's a good example.
Is that a fair number or a fair representation of how it works?
Yes.
And those monies would sit in the bank until the people that are administrating the bank decide to acquire whatever site is that they feel is most applicable based on the guidelines that are in here, or site or group of sites.
Mr. Chair, two caveats to that. They wouldn't start that process until there was sufficient capital to really engage in the negotiations.
I understand, but assuming we've built up a fund of $5 million or $10 million.
And then, and this is, I will have to work through the language, the planning commission, as I indicated, wants a more flexible way of setting priorities, not that it'd be fixed upfront. And so the TDR authority wouldn't have the prerogative just to wheel and deal as they see fit. They would have to follow the priorities that the county sets at whatever point in time the county sets those.
And what restrictions are there on this body or any other body that would be dealing with Montecito? What constraints are there on our ability to simply say, no, you know, we just don't find that, we find this appropriate in this particular location? I'm not saying we wouldn't find the location that did, but it seems like we have a lot of flexibility to say, no, you know, we don't want our single-family lots turned into multifamily lots in this case. And we might say, no, each time around. And if every community in every area made the same determination, no money gets generated, nothing goes in the bank, and none of the donor sites are acquired.
Understood, Mr. Chair. And yes, you have the prerogative to pass your assessment on to the Board, but the Board is the one that makes the final decision. And that's true in your land use matters as well. So you're certainly welcome to weigh in on the question.
Well, I'm just, I am representing, though, correctly how the program works.
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Overll.
I have a couple of probably fairly basic questions, but on the 274 lots, how many owners are there?
Mr. Chair, that's a good question. I know, we've been working with four sets of owners at Naples. And within those families of four sets of owners, there's probably a multiple number of, you know, syndicated investors that are involved in the transactions. But there's basically four sets of owners. Santa Barbara Ranch, which is owned by Vintage Communities, Matt Osgood. Dos Pueblo's Ranch has 16 lots, and that's the Schulte Trust. Macar, which is the former golf course property down coast of Santa Barbara Ranch. And then several lots in between owned by the Morehart interests. So it's a grouping of four basic owners.
Another question, is it conceivable that a sender site and receiver site could both be located in Naples?
No, because Naples is considered a rural area. And so the planning commission's already made that call.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, if I could respond back to a question Commissioner Phillips made a little bit earlier. The question you asked was answered quite well by Tom, but I wanted to add a little bit more substance, which we have spent a lot of time doing at the planning commission, and that's, you know, the question almost goes to, why do TDR? And our local coastal plan has a policy, Policy 213, which requires the county And our local coastal plan has a policy, Policy 213, which requires the county to assist, to encourage and assist the landowners at Naples to transfer the development rights off of the Naples area. So, the county has that policy, that's a reason why, to engage, one legal reason why the county's going through this process. A second reason is currently, the county, another policy in, Policy 213, is that the county discouraged development at Naples. The county has been doing a lot in that regard in the last 20 years. We even appealed a case all the way to the Supreme Court, Morehart versus County of Santa Barbara, in which we lost. Subsequent to that, we approved an official map, which were basically certificates of compliance for over 200 lots, legal lots, at Naples. The landowner, one of the landowners, has challenged the county's designation of the number of lots that we approved and filed suit against us. Right now, there's a stay in the litigation in that lawsuit, and the stay has been settled by a memorandum of understanding between the county and the applicant. And the MOU basically calls for the county to process their applications. This is a parallel track, the TDR program. Nonetheless, right now, staff view is that processing the applications is necessary under the MOU that's required in the litigation settlement, as well as the idea that this parallel track of TDR should go forward, and the county should make an attempt to comply with Policy 213 to encourage and assist the landowner transfer development rights off of the property, off of Naples. One of the consequences that may happen if there is no ability, if there's, if the landowner cannot process, his applications are not processed or denied, and if there's no TDR program to help transfer development rights off, the landowner has the ability at any time to remove himself from the MOU and start selling lots, individual lots, and/or develop those lots individually. So, long answer to what wasn't really specifically your question, which Tom did answer, but I just wanted to provide a little context about why we're going through this process.
Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you. What would be, what would be the advantages to the Montecito community for us to opt into this?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, it's, there seems to be a universal value, perhaps some have the value and it's more, they're more passionate about it than others, is the preservation of the Gaviota Coast in general. And so, there's a thought that there's a stake in this countywide. The only reason that the North County was excluded was because the valuation differential is so huge. But to answer your question, it's, we're all in it together, is, I think, the appropriate response.
Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you. Since we aren't going to save the Gaviota Coast, and we all know that, would it be inappropriate for this Commission to say, we will not subject Montecito to upzoning, but for ridge-top or bluff-top lots, I think you call them, or very visible properties where, in fact, the sacrifice to Montecito will be very evident to all of those who drive by? Some of these properties can't be seen from the road, I'm sure, so we muck up a bit Montecito with upzoning, and, you know, where was that, where was that house we, you know, we saved from being built, we can't see it? We wouldn't have been able to see it. Couldn't we be more specific, or do we either opt in to the ordinance or not?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, again, very insightful question. In fact, in the early phases evaluating TDR feasibility, the Solomar Research Group that did the actual economic analysis, it was their conclusion that the priority should be the view shed for the very reason you indicate, is it what communities or what neighborhoods would be interested in accepting density if they couldn't see the benefits of their acceptance? So, and as to your question on, do you, is it outside the realm for you to make your recommendation on, or qualify your involvement? I don't think we want to handcuff you in whatever your recommendation might be. We will carry whatever it is forward to the Planning Commission, and then ultimately, the Board of Supervisors.
I'm struggling a little bit with, with the program. Not that I don't think it's an admirable program, I'm struggling with, I look at each individual community, Montecito being one where you have a lot of very interested parties, and nobody wants any additional houses of any type. And if every community makes the same determination that they don't want any more, the process breaks down, and I can see Montecito, I'll just, well, not Montecito, let's say, any place on the South Coast, Carpinteria decides, we've got enough density, we've got what we want, we don't want more, we'll let those other communities accept these transfer rights, and we'll get the benefits of whatever they do. And if each of, each community makes the same determination, the process doesn't work. And it seems like the program is designed in a way that it's not likely to work. Now, I'm, maybe I'm missing something, but I just, I don't see how a body like ours would determine that we felt, unless we had a site that we really felt was appropriate for upzoning, but have you seen one? It's just not something.
Well, not lately, I mean, we're, you know, I mean, I mean, the reality. The reality in Montecito is we're almost built out.
Right.
You know, so that anything that, you know, any kind of upzoning that's going to happen is probably, I don't know where it's going to be. I mean, we can't even find places for affordable housing to, you know, up the density to do affordable housing. Where are we going to find people to buy into this? I, you know?
Let's pick a site like Jameson, along Jameson, we've got those lots that are the orchard area. It's not really developed yet, I think we've got three or four lots there along.
Oh, Avocado Ranch or whatever it's called, yeah.
Avocado Ranch, and let's say they came in and go, you know, we qualify for three lots, but we'd like to have ten, which would make us sort of like the neighborhood next door. I don't see what would convince us that we would want to have seven additional lots in exchange for something that happens 25 miles away.
Well, and the other thing that comes up for me is.
And I'm not saying it isn't a good idea as a community, I'm just struggling with whether we would ever make that determination as a body here.
Well, yeah.
How we could convince our neighbors.
And then, the other issue that comes up is, in order to upzone anything, there's the whole environmental process that one has to go through. What happens with that when we've already got traffic that's, you know, we've got intersections that are already at F, D and F, slowly declining, you know, so our roads, you know, we just heard from the Montecito Water District, we don't have enough water to serve the people we've got, and yet, we're going to create more lots to offset, to buy into this program, but we don't have the water to give these people even, so it just, I don't know, it's just a lot, it's a very big thing to try to, for me, to actually kind of come to terms with the ramifications of any decision that gets made and passed on this quickly. You know, that's where I'm left. It's like, oh, wait a second, I'm actually now making a decision for the future of Montecito, and the density of Montecito, and the zoning of Montecito, and yet, there's so much more to look at other than just the benefits of saving Naples.
And.
Which I'm totally committed to, but it just is very complex when you're dealing with a community like Montecito that's pretty much built out.
My other, my other concern here, and I don't think it's a concern because you've, as I understand the ordinance, we have a lot of leeway to decide whether we want to basically opt in to this process or not, but there would be a concern if it was, if it was modified in a way that made it more mandatory, that we might find Montecito was the receiver site for a lot of the development, simply because it could generate so much money, because of the value of Montecito being so high.
Right, sure.
So, that's of concern. I realize the ordinance isn't written that way, but there's a lot of, it's very loose in terms of what, how this ordinance gets fleshed out over time, and so, that's of concern to me. But I can't point to anything I read here that gives me specific problems, because I read it as being, giving us a lot of control over how this gets implemented, but if it, if it morphed over time, it could be that Montecito basically did become the receiver site, because it's the only one that would generate enough money to actually acquire some of these lots, because it is the other, it is the other extreme of valuation in land.
Mr. Chair, if I can to jump in, but the result is going to be an enormous amount of pressure on Planning Commissioners. We either, if this is a popular program, there's going to be this sense of community to participate in saving the coast, and we're going to be maybe making bad decisions for the community on density, or if it isn't a popular program, we're never going to be able to do it, because we'd be idiots, you know, what are you doing this for? So, it's going to be very tough, and if there was more, I don't know, I don't know what the answer was, but it would be really nice, I would think the whole community would be, have an easier time identifying view shed issues, and maybe make that sacrifice, and maybe let us make that tough decision a little more easily.
Commissioner Burrows.
If we should opt into this, can we opt out at a later time? No, I mean, if we find that it doesn't work for Montecito, can we say, okay, we'll just opt out?
Stop sending us this stuff.
Yeah, we're through.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, it's a difficult term, because it's not really embodied in your Land Use and Development Code, because it's the Board of Supervisors that adopts the ordinance, that provides this tool. And so, if you are unhappy with the way it's being implemented, certainly, you could express those concerns to the Board, but it's the Board that amends the code, not the Planning Commission.
What, in your process of putting this together, were there any other thoughts as to, because I thought, as I remember this program originally, you were looking at specific receiver sites, and that seems to have gone away as time has gone on. And I preferred that, just because you knew which areas there might, the pressure might come at you. I guess it has advantages and disadvantages either way. I'm concerned with this program, I've already stated it, but it's indistinct enough that everything both applies and nothing applies. So, it cuts both ways.
Mr. Chair, you're right, in this process, we have come full circle. Initially, the focus was on specific receiver sites, started with a candidate list of about 79, and whittled that down ultimately to about eight or nine sites, and most of them were in the South Coast, I think all of them were, and a couple of them were in the Montecito area. As you point out, the values are such that it was a natural place to gravitate. But because of being so specific, it raised great deal of concern by individuals, and the mere fact.
Everybody wanted the sites to be in some other community.
Of course.
City.
Well, yeah, that's a different beast, because it was, right, but I'm speaking now of the unincorporated areas, and so, what happened through this working group and through the efforts of Supervisors Firestone and Carbehall, was we gravitated what we call a programmatic approach, which is what you're speaking of, something that's a little bit more flexible, a little bit, you know, nebulous at this point in time, and it provides the opportunity for none, or a lot, of property owners to come forward and make their land available for this program, with the ability, on a case-by-case basis, the Planning Commission to pass judgment on their suitability. And that seemed to be a more comfortable approach than to be designating upfront specific sites that could become receivers, and that seemed to just detract from the purpose of putting together a program that might have some potential.
Commissioner Gottstein.
So, from what you're saying, that the site, the receiver sites, that's pretty much going to be generated by the owners of those sites, the way this is set up, right? I mean, like, if I've got a 40-acre parcel, and I come forward and I say, listen, I want to trade to the development rights here for up there, that's, I can, I can do that.
You can apply.
I can apply, and see whether it fits all of it, all of what's needed, right?
Yes.
So, it really is going to be, it's, the success of this is going to be generated by the receiver sites.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, not entirely, as I pointed out, another source of capital could come from other contributors unrelated to land use decisions, grant funds, bond funds, philanthropic contributions, so it isn't exclusive to development in, density increases.
That's interesting, I didn't recognize that portion of the program.
Could you say that again, just, this is just, this is a lot, for mistake.
Sure. Mr. Chair and Commissioner, is it, the ordinance provides for the ability to raise capital other than just through density increases, certainly.
To buy those development rights at Naples.
That's correct.
Right.
In fact, the ordinance is going to encourage, if, I don't remember the specific language, it will be in the guidelines that ultimately occur between the county and the TDR Authority, one of, they're going to be tasked with seeking other sources of funds beyond just looking at acquiring it through TDR.
Okay.
And, you know, a recent example, at least in this county, was the Moore Mesa transaction that involved about a $20 million contribution that came by way of the Public Land Trust and some other contributors. So, it is possible to raise capital other than just through density increase.
Okay.
Well, I, I'll just, well, maybe we should open it up to public comment, since I believe we do, maybe not.
Oh, there is somebody here.
I see Victoria Green is out there.
I think she's a slip, but.
Hiding in the dark over there.
I'll say it.
I'd love to see you weigh on, weigh in on this one, if you have a comment, before I.
Because we know what's going on.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Victoria Green, on behalf of the Montecito Association. You know, our Land Use Committee and Board did not have adequate time to delve into this issue and come up with recommendations for you, so I don't have a recommendation for you today. We did decide that we would monitor your discussion of the topic, and, you know, I think on, in some of the discussions that we did have, on face value, the program is less concerning because you would have authority over any proposed development on a receiver site. So, that in and of itself makes it a little less concerning than, you know, other structures that they could have created in a draft ordinance. I'm a little unclear, in having read the ordinance and heard the discussion today, exactly how, how an entitlement would flow to a receiver site, you know, I've heard this discussion about a density bonus, requiring at a minimum approval of a development plan, so does that mean that on my two-acre lot, I could seek to increase that density and create a second lot through just a development plan and a map, and not require a rezone? That's a little unclear. You know, and then there is this question, too, if I had 40 acres somewhere in the community, and I wanted to seek, say I had land in the old Montecito Avocado Ranch, which I believe is zoned agriculture, I wanted a rezone to a residential designation and some resulting increase in density, you know, there's this provision of requiring that any rezone, well, this is under debate, I think, between County Planning Commission at this point, and maybe to a certain extent, staff. Would I have to buy density, would I have to buy development rights to achieve that upzone? So, it sounds like there's two separate things going on there, and I'm not sure, you know, how it all would play out when, you know, if this is adopted and people do try to use it. That's a little bit blurry to me, and so, it's kind of affects how much authority you have, I think, on any application that did come forward to you to use development rights. Sure, you have the ability to deny it, but the applicant's going to have the ability to appeal that to the Board of Supervisors as well, so I think those are all things for you to consider.
Yeah. Thank you for your comments. I think, I think Victoria's comments are well said. You know, I'm, I'm trying to wear two different hats here as I consider this program. One is my developer hat that I wear, not here, but in other places, and, and so, how would I want to use this program if I was a, if I was a landowner? I want to use this program if I was a, if I was a landowner? I'm finding, I don't know. And the same as, as somebody that's looking at the community in terms of what's, what's best for the community, which isn't always having more density. And again, I'm not sure. The devil's in the details and I'm struggling with what the details here are and mean. I think in, in broad concept, I don't see a problem because it leaves us a lot of flexibility. But how this would play out over time is very difficult for me to imagine. It either will work in a way I don't like or it won't work at all, is my best guess.
Those are good, not good choices.
They're not good choices. Now, and I'm not being critical because I understand this has been an evolutionary process, but that's my best take on it as, as it sits before us today. And, and if that's not correct, I know I don't understand it. And that concerns me even more.
If I might, Mr. Chair, you're in good company. It hasn't been unanimous across the board by any measure of the imagination. And the board was very hesitant and some of the members were convinced that the program isn't feasible. But ultimately, there was an agreement to move an ordinance forward.
To try it.
So I understand your, your apprehension.
So it's not just me?
No. And I might, for the benefit of Ms. Green, she's correct. The, the way the ordinance originally was intended was that you had a captive market. If you sought a rezone and you were granted a rezone, then the density increase, you had to purchase. You had to buy into the program. The planning commission is, is not unfavorable of that program, has asked us to redraft the ordinance to take the mandatory participation out of the rezone. And in its place, put a density bonus program, which means that you, you can, you don't have to seek a rezone to get additional units on your property, but you're going to pay for it if you do get granted a density bonus. The idea being that through a density bonus, the process is not quite as cumbersome. This is where we get into this expedited review. But it doesn't mean that you usurp SEQA or any of the other policies of the county in the, in the course of evaluating a project. So that's, gets it down again on a case-by-case basis. Probably our biggest challenge will be to try to price out the value of a density bonus. How do we induce somebody to do a density bonus versus simply going to a rezone and not have to buy into the program? And so we're not quite sure, you know, what that breakpoint is. And that's something we'll have to think about between now and the time we return to the planning commission and the board.
Thank you. I wasn't paying attention to the lights, so.
I think maybe Michael was first.
Michael.
Quickly, Mr. Chair, is there another program that you're looking at that has been successful like this anywhere?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, that effort really took place during the course of this 18-month process with the working group. And the Solomar Research Group were the ones that really kind of provided that technical insight. Several of their staff people have been involved in setting up programs around the nation. And one of them that was a spearhead of this particular program has since taken the job as the program manager for a program in Washington State. So they brought to bear a number of comparable programs, but frankly, our situation here is pretty unique. And normally, you're dealing with situations where the pressure for development isn't quite as urgent and as immediate as we have at Naples. And so this required a slightly different approach. So that, it wasn't as simple as taking off the shelf a program that worked in Florida and transplant it to Santa Barbara.
Commissioner Oberon?
At the risk of jumping the gun, I have just a few comments of what would make this more acceptable to me as an individual. I, I think if there were some mechanism obviously related to time, but where a minimum number of development rights were purchased and the locations specified, it would be like escrowing the first 15. If you get to 15, it's a go. If you don't get to 15, it's not a go. If some mechanism like that could be established, it would seem like the, the program would be, it would either be accepted and supported by the community and other entities, or it wouldn't be. And so we wouldn't go off and end up purchasing only one development right out of 274. So I think there, there ought to be some minimum number which warrant the program at all. And if we don't reach that, then we don't do it for any of them. So that would be one thought. I would like it to be expanded to be countywide because I could see in North County where there might be somebody coming along with a development there who would benefit by having an opportunity to participate in this. I don't think it should be limited. I understand the rationale behind it, but I'd feel better if it were opened up to the entire county. And then the idea of requiring a density purchase versus the voluntary rezone, I, I don't have a problem with that. I think for the period of time that we are probably talking about in determining whether this program would be successful in accomplishing some of the goals, if we make it a priority for the county, then I think we probably ought to make it enough of a priority that we make it mandatory for a period of time. So those are my comments.
Commissioner Gottsinger?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have one more speaker slip, which is Mark Chilau of the Naples Coalition, is I think what it indicates here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Mark Chitillo. I'm an attorney and I represent the Naples Coalition. And I happened to be walking by and saw a familiar topic on the screen and heard a familiar voice. I'd received notice of other planning commission and board of supervisors hearings about TDR. And had we received notice of this one, we would have been here and been able to participate. But I appreciate your recognizing my speaker slip and giving me a few minutes to explain some of our concerns. The Naples Coalition is firmly in, in the belief that Policy 213 requires an effective TDR program in Santa Barbara County in order to achieve the purposes of retiring the development on the Naples subdivision. And we've been very critical of the path that the county has proposed and many aspects of the plan that is currently before you. And we appreciate your efforts to try, to try and strengthen and expand this plan so that we do actually have a functioning TDR program. As it is currently configured, configured with completely voluntary participation on both sides of the ledger, it's not, we're, we're fairly well convinced, it's just not going to function at any kind of a substantive level to be able to address the values that are present out on Santa Barbara Ranch. So we've, I, I would imagine, I haven't looked at the staff report, but I'm fairly certain that none of the concerns that we've articulated or any of the comment letters which we've submitted that are extensive haven't been provided to you. And I don't know that we really have time and I'm not prepared to go into the details. But we do very much appreciate the Montecito Planning Commission's review of this issue and the comment that I've heard of the need to strengthen the program is one that we heartily endorse. We think that it should be something, well, ideally, it, it would be in a countywide program. We also recognize the, the clear direction that the Board of Supervisors has given, that it, that it should be a South Coast-only program. And in some ways, there may be a benefit to consider taking this in smaller steps. It is essential that the TDR program get adopted and implemented as quickly as possible, particularly under this voluntary configuration that the county is insisting on, which, which provides that the landowner of the sending sites, that is, the, the Santa Barbara Ranch landowner, has complete discretion whether or not to participate and at what price to set the value of these development credits that he may or may not have on his land. So we, we do support a program moving forward as quickly as possible, but one that's more robust than has, has been proposed by staff and reviewed by the planning commission. And we would very much appreciate your endorsement of a strengthened program. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Phillips?
Have, did you give a formal presentation to the County Planning Commission?
Oh, yes.
Well, I, I regret I didn't hear your presentation in more detail. But I guess we're not going to hear it, so.
And I apologize. I, as I said, we, we do get notice of, of pretty much all things Naples. And I'm, I'll talk to Mr. Fig and understand why we didn't get noticed of this. I, I was aware that at the planning commission, the last planning commission hearing, there was reference to the, the need for your planning commission to review this issue. So we weren't completely unaware, but it was an unfortunate oversight because we would have liked to have shared our, our views and perspectives on this program.
Is your group the most deepest involved, would you say?
Yes. Yes. We, the Naples Coalition is seven, seven different community organizations that have banded together with liaison individuals that are speaking as one of the principal advocates for the preservation of the rural character of the Naples town site.
As an extension of your testimony, would you be willing to provide us with any written data that you think is appropriate?
Absolutely. And if, if your commission would like to hear more and could continue this item, we would be happy to come back and, and present additional information. And in any case, we can give you our written comments. But in fact, this TDR issue is, is quite complicated and we do have a presentation that we'd be happy to, to share with you as to identifying the concerns we have with what has been proposed and what we think is a, an alternative that is superior, that would be more effective and equitable to all the, the parties involved.
Well, I'd certainly like to read it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your stopping in.
Thank you.
So I'm going to close the, the public hearing on this item and put it back to the commission. Anybody have any comments on this one? Or even a, a direction to go?
Mr. Chair, I don't think I'm ready to make a recommendation to the County Planning Commission as to how to proceed. I-
I believe, I believe we're recommending directly to the, to the Board of Supervisors.
No, I think we're going to the county, aren't we?
No, we're going to the board. I think it says-
We're to the board.
I think we're recommending to the board.
If I might, Mr. Chair, it's, it's, the, the ordinance would require you go directly to the board, but the planning commission expressed interest to hear your thoughts before they take action July 23rd.
Would, would my fellow commissioners mind if I, I usually like to let you guys go first, but-
No.
I, my, my recommendation is you're not ready. I mean, I don't think this thing hurts, but I don't think it helps. And I have trouble recommending a program that I either don't understand or don't think will work. And I, I have trouble recommending it to go forward at all. Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you. I have trouble going forward as well. It would have been very useful to my decision to have heard from the coalition. I know the League of Women Voters, with whom I've been involved for a long time, is a part of that. And yet, we received no information from that group. And I, that was probably an oversight, but maybe we could have some time to review it and continue this to another day?
Commissioner Gottsinger?
Yeah, I, I'm going to kind of align with the, my other fellow commissioners here. I mean, this, the transfer of development rights is, is a really complex land use issue, you know? And to come to us today with no background, no briefing, no information from, you know, the Naples Coalition or whoever else is working on this, and to say, okay, here it is, we want, you know, this is what we know about it. I mean, I'm sitting here kind of going, oh my God. I mean, I was just literally going to abstain from any vote because like Chairman Barrick, I don't know, I just don't know what this is all about yet. Because I don't have enough information here. I've got an ordinance, but I don't have any background information. I don't have any information that, kind of like all the, the issues that would have been brought up in staff discussions and in a formal staff report, I don't, I, I don't have any of that information. And I'm being asked to make a decision where I don't have the information that I personally would need to have any integrity about my, my vote. So that's, I was just going to abstain because-
Well, Commissioner Gottsinger, as, as much as I'm also concerned that we don't have enough adequate information, I think that one of the reasons we don't is because I just don't feel the program's fleshed out enough to really understand what it means and how it would really apply to any community on the South Coast. And if we're just putting a program in place to be dealt with later, I think that's a, and just not the right way to go.
Yeah, but I have a sense from actually looking at the projection reports, you know, because we're both on there with, with the planning commission. This item has been on the county's plan, the County Planning Commission for, I don't know, I, my guess would be last three or four months. You know, so it, it really has been a process that they've been going through. And it's occurring as an afterthought at their request that it comes to us, which is why I kind of said earlier in the day, why are we even hearing? This has nothing to do with us, you know? But now, all of a sudden, it does. So before I would want to make a decision, I just want to have the ability to see all the information that has been generated. It clearly was generated for the county at some point, or they wouldn't have had all this agenda time spent on it.
Yeah. I don't feel it's appropriate for Montecito to opt out because, you know, so I can't see making that kind of motion that, that we not be appropriate. Because I think it's appropriate that Montecito be included in any program that gets established. So I think we're, we're pretty much in, we're in favor of Montecito being included, I think is the consensus I see here, but-
For me, it's more information, you know? I mean, the- The reason I brought up the 40-acre parcel is because I'm sitting on a 40-acre parcel. You know, and I'm going, whoa, maybe this is, you know, given my, my environmental background-
Forty-one acre lots.
You know, I'm just going, okay, maybe this is something that I would be interested in. But I don't know, because as a personal property owner, not as a planning commissioner, I don't have any information, enough information to know whether there's going to be any benefits to me as a property owner. That's, I mean, really-
Or, or detriments to your-
Or detriments to me, or, or, or my action would be a detriment to my surrounding neighbors because I don't, you know, I'd real, you know, that's the kind of information that I would need before, you know, not like this is personal and not like I'm going to do that, but I, you know, I could see some benefits to me. You know, I'm not going to build on that 40 acres, but I could certainly take some development right, trade off. I could do that if I understood the mechanism a little better, you know? And I can't stay much longer because we didn't think-
So where's that put us as a commission? Anybody feel comfortable making a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would recommend that you suggest to the, the gentleman in front of you that we need a, a better hearing maybe. Or at least with all the parties at least noticed. And we learn a lot from public testimony. I think everyone likes this idea. It's, it's just very hard to embrace it when we're, it isn't fleshed out.
Well, I, I personally feel that even if we had a longer hearing, we might come to the same place that I think I am right now, which is there's not enough meat on the bone here for me to recommend it as an ordinance.
Well, maybe it never will be. But maybe we can make it better if we, if we have more time.
Okay. So you're recommending a continuance?
I think so.
And you're sure that that's what you want?
Well, you know, it would be wrong, I think, for Montecito not to participate. And we don't want to get in the way of-
I'm just offering up whether we might want to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the program needs more work before it is approved. And that we're simply not ready.
I can support that, yeah.
So that would be my personal recommendation, that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the program is not ready for implementation, that it needs more work, more specificity as to how it would work and operate. And that we don't feel comfortable, we believe Montecito should be included in any program that's established, but we'd like to have more, more understanding of exactly how the program would work before we opt, before we would feel that it's ready for approval. That's my recommendation.
And some of that information may be available.
It may well. But I think we can, we can let staff decide whether they want to add, simply brief us and see if they can bring us around to recommending approval or adding more specificity. Or the County Planning Commission, maybe, maybe we can convince the County Planning Commission that, of the same logic, that it's not time, not timely. And I think the downside here is we might want to recognize that the, the risk we're running is that if there is a desire to, to preserve the Naples area, that we're really maybe foreclosing that option by delaying this. that option by delaying this. And I recognize that's a fact, but I'd rather have a program that I understood how it related to our community better, rather than just say, well, let's have a program that I don't necessarily believe will work.
For instance, the mandatory aspect may be critical to the success. It may be that you already know that that's not sustainable, that that's going to be reversed in a summary judgment motion, so you can have it, but I don't know that. It seems to me that the more there's a likelihood of success of having a real impact, the more this community will support our decision to make Montecito a little more crowded, you know?
Anybody want to second my motion, or will it just die?
I will, Mr. Chair. I will second your motion that we advise the Board of Supervisors that it's our sense that the ordinance is not ready to implement.
Shouldn't we also advise the Planning Commission, since they were looking for direction from us?
They're going to hear this matter again, so staff will brief them on our.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if I could just provide a little bit of information regarding that particular motion and the comment or recommendations on the ordinance itself, I think that it would probably, I mean, a lot of the detail for this program is in the ordinance, and I don't know if the commissioners are making an opinion after having read the ordinance, that you think the ordinance itself is not a sufficient mechanism.
I've read it. I don't think there's enough, enough there to tell how this ordinance works.
The, at Planning Commission, we've had several hearings on TDR. We've had a lot of questions from the Planning Commission, asking us specific questions about the ordinance itself and how it works. We haven't heard as many today, but I just wanted to make sure that if we do continue this, or if you do make a recommendation, that we can provide detail or our view of how the ordinance would work. Related to a question earlier, there are many, many TDR ordinances around the state. Some of them are very specific, some of them are very general and allow the market to do a lot of the work for it. Ours, I wouldn't say is either one, but there are, as I say, some have very specific ordinances that prescribe every detail and every aspect of it. There has been viewpoints of a lot of people who work in land conservancies, that this is not the most effective way to organize a TDR program, and that allowing a nonprofit entity to use their experience and abilities and giving them more discretion on how to operate may be more beneficial and have more results than a very carefully prescribed administrative procedure that also subjects the county to possible liability in regard to violating those very strict prescriptions. So that's kind of how this has been formulated, both between the different members of the staff, County Council, the Auditor's Department, and as well as the Planning Commission and the public making comments. And it's come to a, something that's perhaps in between a fairly free-market approach and one that's a very much bureaucratic approach. So that's, that's something we discussed extensively the last Planning Commission, and I'm certain, you know, we're willing to discuss that additionally if there's questions on specific aspects of the ordinance that you have.
Commissioner Burrows?
I do have a question. If there were litigation in regard to one of the transfers or whatever, would that litigation be handled by County Council or by council for the authority? The, what's it called? Yeah, the authority. Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Burrows, it depends what the nature of the lawsuit was. Commissioner Phillips referred, I believe, to one possible lawsuit, which would possibly be a takings lawsuit, a claim against the county, that if the county imposed a mandatory duty on the sending property owner to participate in this, there's a possible claim that the county has taken that landowner's property. That would be against the county. Almost any litigation would be against the county and challenging either our ordinance on the face or its application. The authority would be basically our agent, and I'm certain if we entered into a contract with an authority, they would, I would assume they would ask for an indemnification clause, so we would be subject to the litigation. And again, as I mentioned earlier, the more precise the ordinances and the more prescriptive and the more detailed, the easier it is to challenge that we didn't comply with the procedural aspects of that ordinance.
Commissioner Gottsinger?
It just struck me that maybe if we're going to continue this, is that what we're doing? We're actually continuing it? No, we're not. Your motion is to do what?
Not ready.
Moving to do nothing.
Oh, we're moving to do nothing.
We're recommending that they do nothing.
That they do nothing, okay. Well, anyway, so what I was thinking, what I was thinking is, because I'm hearing it from all the commissioners, is that we're all don't really know enough about, and that we missed the public comment that was possible to have heard. Is it possible, David, that you guys just send us all some CDs of the County Planning Commission hearings? You know, I mean, then we could at least do our homework. I mean, we could, you know, so that we don't hold up staff time and public's time, and all of that's been, all of this discussion has happened, and at least for me, I'm just feeling like I just wasn't part of that, so I don't know all of the ins and outs. I don't expect you guys to sit here for the next however many hours and go through all of that, but I'd be more than happy to sit down and watch the CD of those, of the hearings that had to do with Santa Barbara Ranch, that specifically had to do with the TDR things, or the whole, or whatever part.
Mr. Chair.
I would, I would do that.
Commissioners, we can certainly get the information burned onto CDs. You can watch the hearings. There have been multiple hearings, it may be that.
Yeah, I don't know if all of them was TDR stuff, though.
Correct, and it hasn't been all TDR.
Yeah.
But we could certainly provide that information or narrow it down to the most relevant last hearing, if that's where most of the comments came out. However, I think this, it doesn't change the processing going forward and the calendar. There are already dates set for the County Planning Commission to meet July 21st on the broader Santa Barbara Ranch project, and July 23rd, two days later, is their next date for the TDR program. And I understand at that point, the thought or the hope is that at that point, they would be taking action on the TDR program as it moves forward to the board.
On the 23rd.
On the 23rd. That may or may not occur, but that's their anticipated, anticipated schedule.
Well, given that we have.
But we have July 16th as the Miramar program, and we're about ready to talk about a potential follow-up date for that. But your next date would be August 20th, and we have to ask Mr. Fig here what that means to their overall schedule back to the board.
Well, although here, you know, I don't know, given the docketing and the public and all of that. I mean, if we were able to literally watch the CD, get all the information that we could possibly get, then when, at the beginning of the hearing for the Miramar, if we could, no, we can't do that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I think that would.
You know, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. I was just trying to work out something that served everybody.
The only, the only thing I would say is that, as relates to the specifics of your ordinance and changing any of the language, I don't particularly have a problem with anything in the, in the ordinance as written, and I don't hear really any concern here. But my recommendation, well, there's a few, there may be a few issues around the periphery, but we've talked about those, and I think you can probably tell the County Planning Commission, Commissioner Overall had a couple of comments, and Commissioner Phillips had a couple of comments. But I think in general, well, I've made the motion, the recommendation is not ready. I understand why it's, maybe from a procedural standpoint, you're where you are, but be that as it may, when I look at how this program applies to Montecito, I don't feel comfortable recommending it to the Board of Supervisors as a program that I want implemented related to Montecito, because I don't know what it means to Montecito. So with that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye opposed, no. Aye.
No.
No, okay. Three, two. Commissioner Overall and Gottsinger voted against the motion.
I would like to have the CD, David.
Okay, so. So we are at the end of our standard agenda, unless there is something else. I believe we do.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we did want to follow up from this morning's conversation about agenda management, looking forward for the July 16th Miramar project, and identifying a potential, only a potential, second hearing date to assist if the lengthy day on the 16th, which may in fact extend into the evening hours, to accomplish, as I understand it from our conversation this morning, the directive of the commission is to get staff's presentation, applicant's presentation, and the entirety of what will likely be a substantial amount of public testimony, and have that concluded. And if we can move forward to, into the deliberations and complete the project, we're all set to attempt to do that on the 16th. But we want to have a secondary hearing date. I was able to contact the applicant, the Caruso team, and verify what dates would work for them, and the, based upon some other constraints, the July 22nd date does not work good for one of their key team members, and we do want to make sure that we have their best team members available. So that would put it out to the July 30th, which is a Wednesday, and that would still meet some of the other calendar constraints that we had with a couple of the commissioners. So we would be doing our notice, carefully crafted in advance, to explain what's to occur on the 16th as it relates to full public testimony and concluding that full testimony, and then identify the potential of this other date as sort of a backup plan at the date of the hearing.
Yeah, the idea, just to reiterate for anybody that might be watching, is we will conclude the public hearing on the 16th, but, but I'm anticipating.
I'm going to say that.
Well, because, because we can, we can, we can take all the testimony. It does not mean that we can't ask for additional information and take additional testimony, but the idea will be to take all of the public comment.
But, but say, say we have 200 speaker slips, how can we, and we get through 125 speaker slips, how can we then say, okay, it's 10 o'clock tonight, and the next time we meet, we are not taking any more public comment? I don't think we can do that, can we? I mean, that's why I'm a little.
I don't want, I don't want people to think that this will go multi-day public testimony.
I understand.
If anyone wishes to address us, they should plan on being here.
At that day.
On that day.
And then if we don't get through it, we don't get through it.
If we don't get through it, we don't get through it.
Okay, fine, okay.
But if anybody thinks there's going to be a continuation hearing, they're, they're looking at not participating.
I'm a little shaky about that.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
We're adjourned.